It's been a long month, but we're back. We're back in session. To the regular meeting for the City Daily City, Monday, September 12th, 2022. Pursuant to government code, section 54953E. Members of Daily City Council and staff will participate in this meeting via teleconference. Members are of the public are encouraged to watch the meeting via live stream on the city's YouTube channel at www.youtube.com/dailycityvideomeetings or the city's agenda website at www.dailycity.org/agendas or on local channel 27 Comcast. With that, let's go ahead and stand for the pledge. Pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag, United States of America.
To the republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, if you can have a roll, do roll call, please.
Mr. Buenaventura.
Present.
Ms. Di Giovanni.
Present.
Ms. Manalo.
Present.
Mr. Sylvester.
Glenn Sylvester, present.
Dr. Rod.
Present. Thank you, Ms. City Clerk. First thing on our agenda is a proclamation for suicide prevention. Alright, so September 2022 is Suicide Prevention Month, and I'd like to present this proclamation. Whereas Daily City will join the county, state, and country in honoring Suicide Prevention Month, September. National Suicide Prevention Week, September 4th through the 10th. And World Suicide Prevention Day, September 10th, to spread the message that suicide can be prevented. And whereas in 2021, 54 people died by suicide. Thirty-four percent decrease from 82 in 2020 in San Mateo County. And whereas in 2020, 12,297 contacts received by the San Mateo County Star Vista Crisis hotline. In July 2022, Star Vista hotline received a 10% increase compared in July 2021. Likely due to the debut of the 988 number on July 16th. And whereas, daily city residents are urged to play a role in supporting each other and preventing suicide by knowing the signs of suicide, finding the words to communicate and reaching out to local 24/7 resources, including our local San Mateo County Star Vista Crisis hotline at 650-579-0350. Or National Suicide Prevention Lifeline, 988, or 1-800-273-TALK. And whereas, residents can also play a role in suicide prevention by supporting local Suicide Prevention Month events, advocacy days, and communication campaign across the city, county, and state. The 2022 September Suicide Prevention Month theme is Take Action for Suicide Prevention: Thriving at All Ages. And whereas, beyond September, Daily City has joined the San Mateo County Mayor's Mental Health Initiative, where mayors across the 20 cities in San Mateo County have came together with the mission of promoting awareness of and access to mental health resources in the communities. Now therefore, I, Dr. Roderick Dos Magual, Mayor of the City of Daily City, do hereby proclaim September 2022 as Suicide Prevention Month and call upon everyone in our community to find their role in suicide prevention. With that, I'd like to call on to my colleagues, starting with Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni.
Oh, thank you. I didn't mean to raise a hand right away.
Okay.
But I was gonna, you're presenting to someone, aren't you?
Um, yes.
Okay, go ahead and do your presentation. I apologize.
Not a problem.
And then I'll talk. To the person.
Yes. Okay. So I'd like to provide to Sherry, Sherry Bowles. If you'd like to go ahead and share a couple of words.
Sherry, you're on mute.
Good evening, Dr. Rod, Vice Mayor Buenaventura, and Councilmembers Sylvester, Di Giovanni, and Manalo. My name is Sherry Bowles, and I'm a member of the San Mateo County Suicide Prevention Committee. Thank you very much for joining the county and your neighboring cities and towns throughout the county to promote September as Suicide Prevention Month. I am honored to accept your proclamation on behalf of the committee. So I encourage you and daily city residents to promote this year's theme, Take Action for Suicide Prevention: Thriving at All Ages. I'm taking action today by wearing purple and teal, the national colors of Suicide Prevention Month, using this year's theme as my virtual background, which can be found on the county's website. Other ways to take action are to attend free in-person or virtual events hosted by our community partners. Together, we can take action for suicide prevention by knowing the signs of suicide, finding the words by checking in with someone we are concerned about, and sharing resources, including the San Mateo County Star Vista Crisis hotline, which is area code 650-579-0350-988. This is a new three-digit National Suicide Prevention Lifeline and the county's website at smchhealth.org/suicidepreventionmonth. Thank you again for recognizing September as Suicide Prevention Month.
Thank you, Sherry. I really appreciate it. I'll open it up to my colleagues, starting with Councilmember Justin Manalo.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Bowles, for your commitment and dedication towards mental health. It's really folks like you that are on the forefront that make such a difference. So thank you for your continued support and dedication in this endeavor. I know it's so important for us to have resources in the city of Daily City in San Mateo County, and really to be able to see those signs. And I, when people have depression, they literally need a lifeline. And so I want to say thank you to Mayor Dos Magual with his promotion and providing first aid training for mental health. I think that even providing that for our community, that first aid training for mental health, anyone can actually take that class. And so that also is an opportunity to step in and ensure, like you said, Ms. Bowles, what are the signs? And we can only combat this together. And so thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, for your initiatives on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Justin Manalo, for all those kind words. Appreciate it. Next up is Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to thank the mayor. He joined the group right away. He didn't hesitate because the group was already formed, but knew that this is important because, without saying, you know, I don't want to speak for him, but I know that he's been touched sadly, and myself, and maybe others on our council and our community, and Ms. Bowles, that buy suicide. Members that we loved in our families and Daily City community. Never comes easy because sometimes you never know why. And I think that people sometimes, when you talk to the families, that they always search for why. And it's not always there. And one of the things that I remember speaking with a clinician, having lost someone, is they said, sometimes they can be the happiest right before. Like, people say, I didn't see anything. And sometimes it is their happiness right before, like a few hours before, and then it's unexplainable, and then they're gone. So it's a very complicated, and I know that, I thank you for your work, Ms. Bowles, because COVID has taken a blanket off of what I do hope that people will seek more help. Because I do think the numbers were there. It's just that COVID is horrible, but it did allow people now, look at the connectivity that we have with you. Look at the connectivity we have in over J Africa and our new director, Behavioral Health. We have a clinician in our police department, and our, and our police officers are taking trainings. So it's something that, not to be ashamed of, it's something that needs to be, and we do hope you get involved. And I would love to have maybe whatever the mayor thinks, a town hall or whatever, and extend more of these conversations. Because I think conversations are ba, seem basic to someone, but they really open things up. And people that don't, as you already know, Ms. Bowles, so I thank you for your work and your committee. And, you know, we're there to support, and it's nothing to be, people need to know there is help. But in the person that's there already, sometimes it's hard to reach them. So that's, I think, the hard part for, that I know that on a personal basis, it's hard to grasp that part. And so I appreciate it, and please give my love to all. And we look forward to working with you more. And thank you for being here tonight, and thank you again, Mayor, for being proactive. I really appreciate it because you know that all of us have been touched. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni, for those, those words. And I'd like to call a Councilmember Glenn Sylvester.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Bowles, it's so apparent, and what you are doing and continue to do is to provide awareness. I know over 40 years ago, in my previous occupation in public safety, suicide was, it existed. And to me, it crosses all boundaries in ethnicities. And the increased awareness and the continued awareness is very important. I know you have only touched the surface as you were being briefed, so as we can continue our council meeting. But folks need to know about suicide prevention, what you can do, what resources are out there, the telltale symptoms of suicide. And sometimes that conversation, when speaking with someone, and you can say, it's okay to feel the way you feel, but you have to engage and have that conversation in the first place. And I'll tell you, over 40 years, and it's come a long way. And anything can trigger suicide, and folks need to know, it's now football season. And that can be cause for alarm, you know, when folks are detracted from the rest of their family over a sport. So keep up the great work you're doing. We look forward to always supporting suicide prevention. I think it's very important. And one last aspect, and which has come to my mind, awareness that even it affects juveniles, to which they have always been left out before in the past. So, great job, and thank you so much, and keep up the great work. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Glenn Sylvester. We have Vice Mayor Ray Buenaventura.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Bowles, for being here today. I guess I had a question that's sort of been grappling with. So I have an active Facebook profile, and sometimes I see things on there that cause me to be alarmed about someone maybe giving up, contemplating. And I'm just wondering what sort of advice you would give. I'd like you to share with the, with the public about what to do when you, even when you see something like that on Facebook, or what would you recommend I do or the community does?
Great question, Vice Mayor Buenaventura. So when people share things, whether they talk about it or post about it, you know they're crying out for help. So that's a red flag immediately. Encourage you to call the 988, which is the new three-digit number, where you, they will then route you to the most appropriate party, where you can then, you know, ask, you know, what can I do? I have noticed, you know, my friend exhibiting this behavior, or I've noticed this person has changed lately. That is their way of crying out for help. And so it's 24/7, and the best bet is always call 988 to get those answers.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I just want to conclude and say thank you, Sherry, for the work that you all do. I think these past three years have been really tough. I've had some of my closest friends that have taken their lives. I'd had a former student that's taken their life. And just like Councilmember Pam, Pamela Di Giovanni was talking about, you know, never knew, just never knew. And, and this is the range of folks that were former students that just finished high school, maybe two to four years out of high school, to one of my friends that was a former counselor. And you would think that would be the furthest from, from committing suicide and super educated and was one of the hardest things that I've been going through over the past few years. And, and COVID-19 has definitely poured gasoline all over people's mental health. And really want to, you know, make a message out there for the public, you know, a lot of times, even in our own cultures, there's a cultural taboo of not talking about getting help. That when people say that we're trying to get help, we're trying to, we're airing out dirty laundry. But in all honesty, I think folks need to be able to find that they're safe, that they're supported, and people that love them. And so I just want to say thank you for, to Ms. Bowles. I want to thank people that helped start the Mayor's Mental Health Initiative for this past year. It's, and to echo, like my colleagues in talking about how this has affected youth, and I see this a lot as a person that runs a nonprofit, what it's done to people's relationships with their peers. Being socially isolated for that long, and then coming back to, to school, then having the pressures of trying to maintain or even exceed the expectation of what they're supposed to be as students. And so I think we're at a time where we just need to be able to give folks grace and support and love. And I just want to say thank you for everyone that believes in this work. Yeah, thank you. Okay. All right. Moving forward to item number two, we have a proclamation for National Preparedness Month. Go. Okay. All right. So National Preparedness Month, during September, the US Department of Homeland Security and National Preparedness Month Coalition urge all Americans to take simple steps to make their families better prepared for emergencies. And whereas, with the COVID-19 pandemic, wildfires throughout the state, the yearly winter storms in our county, all will continue to have devastating effects on the people and the economy. And whereas, the loss of life and property can be greatly reduced if appropriate preparedness measures are taken before, during, and after a disaster. And whereas, these lifesaving procedures will be highlighted during the month of September as the North County Fire Authority, City Emergency Services, and other service organizations provide disaster preparedness information to daily city residents. And whereas, the community should take steps to help them before a disaster strike, including making a kit, having a plan, being informed, and getting involved. And whereas, it is highly recommended that our citizens become involved by participating in earthquake preparedness classes and the community emergency response team, oh, my bad, response team program, the CERT program. And whereas, the important safety information should be studied and observed throughout the year in order to reduce injuries, loss of life, and property damage in the event of a disaster. Now therefore, I, Dr. Roderick Dos Magual, Mayor of the City of Daily City, do hereby proclaim September 2022 as National Preparedness Month and encourage all daily city residents to increase their knowledge and awareness of proper safety measures to follow before, during, and after a disaster. And with that, we have Matt Peterson, Battalion Chief of North County Fire Authority.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. The North County Fire Authority would like to thank you for recognizing National Preparedness Month. Emergency preparedness is not just done one month a year, but should be considered year-round. National Preparedness Month creates an opportunity for citizens to prepare their homes, businesses, communities for disasters such as fire, earthquakes, floods, and any other natural disaster. Planning and preparing starts before the disaster. When citizens take responsibility for preparing their families and communities, the chance for survival and return to normalcy is greatly increased. The North County Fire Authority urges all citizens to plan and prepare themselves, their families, and friends for any disaster or emergency so that they, so that they increase the chances for survival and a positive outcome. Go to our website, northcountyfire.org, and click on various preparedness and fire safety tips. Thank you.
Thank you, Battalion Chief Peterson. We have some words from my colleagues, starting with Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni.
Thank you, Mayor. How are you doing, Peterson?
Eight p.m.
Pretty, pretty busy, huh?
Yeah.
I see all those strike teams going out, and I think that people don't remember, other than, you know, the news gives us a little clip every once in a while, how these fires have devastated and how close they are to us. Like, we used to be, we could watch it on television and think, oh, they're far away. Now they're more frequent, and they start earlier, and sometimes out of control. And then you guys are trying to man that front, like in Oregon, Southern California, Northern California, and then try to get all of us around here to cut our brush back, or whatever we need to do, and make sure we're prepared too. And then we had that little baby jolt, I think it was last night, maybe a baby jolt. But it's a signal to say how appropriate, that things are happening every day, geologically, climate change-wise, and that it can happen anytime, anywhere. And that we as individuals, I think, is it, you can correct me if I'm wrong, that it's, we need to be self-sustained for 72 hours as individuals. I know it's complicated. Is that correct?
I'd say that'd be a very responsible decision.
Yeah, I would say that, and what we, we need to be doing that. So you're right. And then I think our city, you know, they've been trying to, you know, to engage the people in the CERT. And then I think that maybe even some of, we can help ourselves, help get the word out as well, and really tell the people they really need to have the basics. And I know that you guys cut down the programs so it'd be more amenable to people, like for hours and time, and just have basics, you know, so that we can all learn the basics. And I'll be, I'll be happy to help get the word out, you know, I'm good at that part. And firefighter's daughter. But anyway, but thank you, and everyone, all the BCS, all the firefighters. I mean, you guys are all hands on deck, in between even answering calls here locally for heart attacks or anything, accidents. I mean, I don't think people really realize that, along with our response with our PD to support and our CHP and other ones. We really appreciate that. And then CAL FIRE comes in as partners, and many of those fires as well. And I understand we're short-staffed sometimes on the strike teams, but our two strike teams, I think there were two, right? That went out, and they're came back?
Yes, well, from the county, we have three strike teams out.
Three?
Yeah, but from the North County, we had one strike team. And then they just got back this afternoon around 4:00 p.m., after a 14-day deployment, 15-day deployment. So the engine's back in service. It's ready to go out again if needed.
Yeah, exactly, right. Goes right back and goes right back out. So thank you so much. Thoughts and prayers to everyone and your families, because they're serving too. So, and please convey that to everyone. Thank you very much, and thanks for being here. And thank you, Mayor, for recognizing that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni. Next up is Councilmember Justin Manalo.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, and I just want to say thank you to the firefighters and really also each and every one of you for your dedication. Like you said, you know, National Preparedness Month is not only one month, but throughout the year. And I know that each and every one of you are dedicated all throughout the year and every single day. So I want to say thank you again for your service to the community, your commitment, and also your sacrifice. I know that many of you don't see your families very often. You know, we see that as our weather continually shifts, climate, climate change is here. It's not, it's not, it's happening right now. And so now, more than ever, your work is so important about teaching our communities, whether it's families within neighborhoods, about preparedness, whether it's fire or earthquakes. And so thank you again for all that you do, each and every one of you, because we know it's so important to educate families and individuals on the basics of preparedness. So many thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Justin Manalo. Moving on to, I think it was Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And in talking about preparedness, you know, the other day, I was actually looking through some of these kits, that these preparedness kits that, that are being sold. And I was just wondering, Matt, if you could tell me, what is your recommendation as to what should be in that kit? And what should be we looking for in, in terms of, because there's so many choices. Or, or do you recommend like just making your own, or getting one of those self-made kits, something to guide us on what to do?
Sure. I think it's important to get an inventory of what you would like. And then if it was myself, I would, I would rather look at that inventory and then buy what items. I could pick and choose what I wanted, and then I could buy the brands that I wanted, the, the quality that I wanted. Where, you know, most of these kits, they kind of give you everything, and sometimes they're not the best quality or most up-to-date. And so going on to the many websites that are out there, and I believe we have an inventory listed on our website as well. Look at what a basic kit includes, and then I would just. And then I would just create a shopping listing and go get it yourself. And a lot of the things you probably already have at your house, and you wouldn't need the redundancy of buying a kit.
Sounds good. Good advice. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I just want to say thank you to North County Fire, you know, for doing what you do. Just echo Councilmember Jess Manalo. We're experiencing unprecedented weather patterns that I've never experienced. You know, some of my colleagues were in Long Beach this past week, and I grew up, grew up there, and it felt like a desert when, you know, it's supposed to be beach weather or overcast weather. And on the last day, right before I was about to fly out, it was like a typhoon, monsoon type of weather. And it's almost like this weirdest type of weather that you don't see or experience every day. And, you know, we have to be prepared for what's going to happen. And I just want to say thank you. And great question, Vice Mayor, because that was the same question I was going to ask. Because what was I going to put in my fire, I mean, my emergency kit? You know, need to go and check out my family's inventory as well. So thank you so much. Okay. Any other folks from my colleagues want to say anything? Okay. All right, so moving on to the approval minutes, can I get a motion to approve approve a minutes for the regular meeting of July twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two, and the special meeting of August eighth, two thousand twenty-two?
Motion to approve?
Again?
Yeah, a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving to setting an agenda, I would like to move item number twenty-seven, which is a resolution establishing eviction protections due to non-payment of rent from twenty-seven to after the consent agenda. Are there any other items that?
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
My understanding is that item number twenty-six on the agenda will no longer need to be heard by the council. We're going to, staff is requesting we pull the item completely.
Okay. Sounds good. All right, I think that's about it. So can I get a motion to approve the agenda with twenty-six being striked out and then twenty-seven moving after the consent agenda?
Motion to approve?
Again?
All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. Are there any items that would like to be pulled?
Yes, Mayor. I would just like to pull this for the sake of seven. And I think eleven, fourteen, and eighteen.
Okay. So seven, fourteen, or seven, eleven, fourteen, and seventeen?
And eighteen.
And eighteen?
Yes, sir, not seventeen.
Oh, not seventeen?
Yeah.
Eighteen, so. So let me get some clarification. So it's seven, eleven, fourteen, and eighteen?
Correct, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, so can can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda? But take in consideration of seven, eleven, fourteen, and eighteen to be pulled?
Good point.
Approve? Motion?
Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda minus a seven, eleven, I think I said eighteen, right?
Yeah, seven, eleven, fourteen, eighteen?
Yes.
Okay. So can I get a motion?
Glenn Sylvester, I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of the items specified that you've just mentioned, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Can I get a second?
Again?
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So moving down to item number seven.
I think that's, what staff member is that? That's
Uh, Linnell will be giving, there she goes.
Helen now?
Hi, good evening.
It's just a brief, yeah, just a little overview of the Calpers.
Okay, so as a requirement of the Community Development Block Grant and Home Programs, the city must submit a report on the use of CDBG and home funds. And so this report titled "The Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report," paper for short, basically summarizes expenditures and accomplishments of the CDCB, City CDBG and Home Programs in the past fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand twenty-one, to June thirty, two thousand twenty-two. During the fiscal year, the city expended a total of one million sixty-nine thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars in CDBG funds and five hundred and eighty-one thousand three hundred and ninety-nine in CDBGCV funds. So CDBGCV funds are additional CDBG funds that were allocated in two thousand twenty as part of the Coronavirus Aid, Response, and Security Act, Prevent, Prepare For, and Respond to COVID-19. And in terms of the home funds, the city expended a total of five hundred forty-six thousand sixty-six dollars and about four hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars of these funds were used for emergency rental assistance for households affected by COVID-19. So the Finest Department is still in the process of closing out the general ledger, so there may still be minor adjustments to these numbers. But I don't expect to change very much.
Yeah.
So some of the outcomes from the fiscal year include the following. The City Residential Rehab Program issued six loans and six senior and security bar grants totaling three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars to eleven low-income homeowners. Center for Independence of Individuals with Disabilities provided home accessibility modification to four households, and three of these households were elderly households. Rebuilding Together Peninsula provided minor home improvement repairs. Peninsula Family Service provided subsidized childcare to twenty-seven children. Life Moves assisted five households comprised of twenty-four persons at family crossroads, which is a transitional shelter for homeless families located here in Daly City. And Legal Aid assisted ninety-one households comprised of two hundred and twenty-nine persons with affordable and free legal services relating to evictions and tenant landlord issues. Project Read provided twenty-one adults with literacy training. Project Sentinel conducted ten fair housing cases. And Daly City Partnership provided forty-four households with emergency tenant-based rental assistance using the home funds and forty-two households, again with emergency rental assistance using the CDBGCV funds. In addition to this, Daly City Partner used CDBGCV funds to provide ninety-three persons with mental health services and distributed food to over twenty-three hundred households. And the city also used our funds to make a loan payment towards our Section one oh eight loan that was used to build the Bay Shore Community Center. So staff has basically recommends that the council approve the attached caper. The draft caper was made available for public review from August twenty-eighth through September twelfth. And we haven't received any comments regarding the caper. And I'm available to provide additional information desired by the mayor or council members. Thank you.
As you can see, the reason to highlight a lot of this, Mayor, was because people really need to know and that our mental health is working. The access that people are starting to have now and the comfortability, knowing that we have resources. The word is out. And that all these things, and then for you guys that are sitting on the, on the CDBG Committee, I thank you and Linnell and Betsy, because it's a lot of hard work, but to let the people know there are resources out there, and the city has been providing and continues to provide through the COVID, as she mentioned, and the mental health is a part of it. And I'm glad to hear, I'm not glad to hear the numbers, I'm sure you're not either, Mayor, but in council, but it's to say that people know and are feeling comfortable in what we're providing. And I can't say enough, thank you very much, and thank you for allowing me to pull this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Pamela Dijavani, Councilmember Jess Manalo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank staff, Linnell, and Betsy for your continued work on managing these programs continuously. I know that Vice Mayor Benaventura and Mayor Dos Magual was on the committee for a while, and I joined this year with Mayor Dos Magual. And knowing that there's very extensive work around ensuring that as these funds are dispersed, that there's real implementation to the community on the ground is so important. And hearing all of the data points that you've mentioned and the households, the families that have been touched in regards to the true need in our community is so essential. And so with that, Mr. Mayor, I motion to approve.
Second?
We have a, we have a motion, and we have a first and a second. Before we do that, are there any other comments? Okay, I just want to say thank you to the staff again. I think when we talk about providing funds where we really need them, I think the staff recommendations were on point. So I know there's a first and a second, so all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you again to Betsy and Linnell and the staff and all the organizations that were funded, doing the work. Okay.
Thank you.
Item number eleven, accepting and appropriating a five-thousand Parks Pass grant from the California State Library.
Hey, Kayla.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak about this small but nice grant that we received. The State Library has partnered with the State Parks to provide free vehicle day use passes to California State Parks that are lent out through all of your public libraries. So this is something that's new, and I hope you'll have an opportunity to take advantage of it. And then to further build on that program, they also provided grants for related library programming to promote literacy, appreciation of outdoor spaces, and fresh air and exercise. And we were fortunate to receive a grant, and we are going to use the funds for story walks. Story walks are an installation in an outdoor space of signs, the pages of a children's story placed along a path or trail. And it's a really creative way for children and their families to enjoy a park path while reading an adventure along the way. And so we will be working with our wonderful people in Public Works to put this in a couple of our local public parks that are nearby our libraries.
That's exciting. So, yeah, thank you, Mayor, for letting me pull this item and colleagues, because this is a very happy item.
Right.
And then we can get more of that.
Yes, yes, indeed.
Thank you, Shayla.
Thank you.
Any other colleagues who'd like to share anything? I think this is a you know, this is also funding that is very, very valuable and a creative way to improve literacy. So I'm really, I'm curious and seeing the story walk, and I might have to take some of their lesson plans and implement in my classroom, so. All right, so can I get a motion to approve item number eleven?
Motion to approve?
Okay, you have a first, we have a second?
Second?
And a second, so all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, item number eleven, or my bad, item eleven passes off to item number fourteen, authorizing interim city manager to execute a professional service agreement with Park Engineering for Mission Street Streetscape Project.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Senior engineer Roland Yupps is going to do the presentation for this.
Hi, good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. Staff would like to recommend the City Council authorize the city manager to execute an agreement and any amendments in the amount of one hundred and eighteen thousand dollars to Park Engineering. The Mission Streetscape is a pedestrian and street beautification project for the Mission Street corridor from Crocker Avenue and to Templeton Avenue. The project will widen the existing three-foot concrete median to approximately seven-foot, install median landscaping and a garrison system, and some of the medians will be extended further into the intersection. Additional pedestrian improvements include bowbouts, curb ramps, high-visibility crosswalks, improved pedestrian signage, rapid, rapid flashing beacons and pedestrian streetlights. Mission Street is a heavily utilized pedestrian corridor with a demonstrated history of pedestrian and vehicle collisions. The bowbow and median improvements will shorten crosswalk distances and provide a pedestrian refuge. The narrower vehicle lanes also have a calming effect and encourage motorists to drive slower. The City Council technically accepted and appropriated two grants for the project, eight hundred and ten thousand dollar Measure Eight grant from San Mateo County Transportation Authority, and the four hundred thousand Transportation Development Grant, Transportation Development Act, Article Three grant. Staff released IRFP for the Construction Inspection Services on, in July of this year and received two to the eighteen firms from the city's two thousand twenty-one general engineering shortage with expertise in construction inspection observation. Six firms submitted their proposals by the due date in August, and a panel of public works staff evaluated proposals on their technical merits. And the panel determined park engineering has the experience and qualifications that most closely met the needs of the project. If approved, the Mission Streetscape project is anticipated to begin construction in October twenty-two and be completed by spring two thousand twenty-three. Staff recommends the, there are sufficient funds available in the transportation CIP project accounts for the Mission Streetscape project. And so, in conclusion, staff recommends the City Council authorize the city manager to execute an agreement and any amendments in the amount of one hundred and eighteen thousand dollars for the professional services with Park Engineering of Arinda, California. Staff is available to answer any additional information desired by the mayor or council members.
Thank you, Roland, and just to be clear, Mr. Mayor, council members, this is a request for the Construction Inspection Services for the Mission Streetscape project. The actual award of the Mission Streetscape project is further down on your agenda as item number twenty-five.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I just, yeah, the reason was because people don't realize there are so many grants out there that you guys are always like in looking into grants and our other departments as well, that when people think there's not money, we look, we look in Daly City, the premier department heads and premier engineers and premier department heads and other departments, we look for the grants, and there are a lot of grants out there. And then to have that area improved, not just for safety, but we're hoping that we can make it, start making it visually more accepting and more viable at that area as well. That's, that's pretty exciting. So thank you all, and thank you, Mayor, because we need that area to have improvement, as we all know. That's, that area has been neglected for a long time. So thank you very much. This is just the beginning. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, any other any other comments from my colleagues? All right, seeing none, can I get a motion to approve item number fourteen?
Motion to approve?
Okay, got a motion, can we get a second?
Again?
And a second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Okay, item fourteen passes. Moving on to item eighteen, accepting appropriating funding from the County of San Mateo for the Second Course Meal Program.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the City Council. Denise Brown from the Recreation Division. Back in July of two thousand twenty-one, Denise Brown from the Recreation Division. Um back in July of twenty twenty-one, the council authorized the city manager to. Enter into a one-year agreement for the second course program. And at that time, the second course program was transitioning in and the Great Plates Delivered Program was transitioning out. Um we've done it a full year through the county and um this. Accepting and appropriating funding is for year number two. Um to again serve the um. Meal delivery for vulnerable residents uh through Daly City. And um the county is giving us up to three hundred and ninety thousand dollars to provide this program. Um but they're also looking at transitioning this program out because they're seeing that the need is not as great. Um so we are going to do our best to fulfill the grant, but it's again an extension of this last year. And uh we have delivery drivers and we are using our nurses. That support our ongoing programming and wellness for our community. And so we are asking the council to. E-extend the amended agreement um to provide the second course program. And we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mayor. As you can tell, that that was an important one. Uh because uh Denise said, and I just want to say, as you know, that a couple of times from. People have been called and just so let the mayor and colleagues know, I'm sure you guys have well, people have contacted me for situations such as. They have cancer, they've had surgery and they need food delivered. Um so it fulfills a lot of different needs for our seniors. Because as we know, unexpected things happen and you guys were really, really kind. To another one person I know that that went through and had some serious health issues. And transitioned and delivered it and delivered and it made sure that it was delivered and set. In a certain spot, even through that, not to disturb them, went up and beyond. So I can't say enough to. To thank you for that, for the kindness as well, not just for this program and hopefully there's, you never know. There has to be another vehicle out there that we can continue in some manner. We never give up, right Denise?
Never give up. We're serving a great senior population right now. They're doing it in person and we have extended it through. Bay Shore Community Center as well, so we're very excited about that.
Wow, amazing. So thank you, Mayor, and thank you colleagues for allowing me to pull this item and uh thank you Denise and everyone there. Incredible. Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you. Next up, we have Councilmember Justin Manalo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um I just want to extend my thank you to uh Ms. Denise Brown and her team. Whether it's um in-person meals at the site now that we are um, you know. Back on site, I know that that was something our older adults and seniors really missed. Um being able to be with one another um to delivering meals to those most in need. Um so thank you very much to you and your.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yes, I just want to echo my my fellow colleagues as well. Um was able to participate in some of the services and distributing um food and. I just want to say thank you to the whole um. The whole group Denise um, you know, being responsive to the needs during the pandemic and. Continuing this um work is very, very important that we just didn't sit on our hands, but you you all are creative. And finding ways to reach out to the most vulnerable in our community. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm. And um so with that, uh I get a motion to approve item number eighteen, please.
Motion to approve.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, well, first and second. So all those in favor say aye.
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 All right. So moving on um. To item. Twenty-one and we're talking about a resolution. To establishing eviction protections due to non-payment of rent and no-fault evictions. For residential tenants where the failure to pay rents results from income loss resulting from covid nineteen. And I'll hand it over to our city attorney, um Ms. Rose Zimmerman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. Before you this evening is a resolution establishing eviction protections due to the non-payment. Of rent for residential tenants for failure to pay rent as a result of covid nineteen. Just by way of background, um as we're all aware that during the covid nineteen emergency. There have been many tenants who have been affected due to the loss of income, due to the impact of the economy and their employment. And risk homelessness as a result of eviction due to non-payment of rent. On January twenty ninth, twenty twenty-one, Governor Newsom did sign SB ninety-one. Which protected renters who cannot pay their rent due to covid nineteen related hardships. And established state guidelines for the distribution of state and federal funds to address. The debt facing many millions of tenants and property owners as a result of covid nineteen. In order to implement SB ninety-one, the state of California did establish the Emergency Rental Assistant Program, also known as ERAP. For the distribution of state and federal funds to address this. This ongoing crisis for millions of tenants as a result of covid nineteen. The state did create the online application portal known for landlords and tenants as housing is key. On March thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, Governor Newsom did sign AB twenty-one seventy-nine into law. Which further extended the existing eviction protections for non-payment of rent due to financial distress as a result of covid nineteen. Through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, while the applications under the Housing and Key State Program for rental assistance was pending. On April twelfth, twenty twenty-one, our city council did adopt Resolution twenty twenty-one forty in support of the right to stay home and encourage landlords. And tenants to apply for the State Emergency Rental Assistance Program. However, due to the volumes of applications submitted through Housing is is key, residential tenants are continuing to experience long delays. In receiving the funds from the state and do risk eviction. The state eviction protections for tenants have applied for emergency rental assistance programs and applications remain pending. Ended in January thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. However, many of our residents do face. Evictions and are continuing to 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 are continuing to have delays in receiving the funds through the Housing is Key Program. As a result of that, in order to prevent evictions and to protect the public health and safety of public welfare, our mayor did direct our staff. To seek and draft a resolution extending the eviction protection, eviction protections for residential. Tenants through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, and that resolution is before the council for counsel consideration. At this time, the staff does recommend that the council consider the draft attached resolution. To establish eviction protections for non-payment of rent for residential tenants due to covid nineteen. And for those tenants that do have a pending application for any state, federal and local rental assistance program. To continue those protections to December thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Staff is available to uh provide any information that the mayor or the city council may have at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Rose, um for that report. Um I'd like to open this up to my colleagues if they have any questions or comments concerning this resolution.
I guess after public comment.
After public comment, okay. Um anybody else? Okay, so with that, I'd like to um open up to public comment, but I'd like to consider that um due to. Some um technical um difficulties if. I know there's going to be a series of speakers that want to speak and they're going to be using translation as well, so. Um I want to provide the best access for them to all speak, so they'll be speaking from one computer. And I just want to see if we can allow that. As well. Yeah. Okay, so with that, I'd like to open up um for public comment.
For those members of the public who wish to comment on this newly placed item nine number twenty-one, please click the raise hand feature to speak on that agenda item. For those joining by phone, press star nine to raise your hand.
So I have a quick question, Leilani. I know that there's many folks that want to speak um. And we want to get people on record and what would be the best way to, maybe there might be a city clerk question. Just to allow them to get their names and then to get them officially on the record for their testimonial.
I would suggest if there are multiple people on one device, um if they just make mention of that when they first get on. Um and then for each of them to individually um announce their names for the record.
Got you.
And then to let them know when they've concluded from that device and then we'll move on to the next speaker if that works, Mayor.
Okay, yes, I'd like to uh make that um possible and. Let's go ahead with the public comment.
So it looks like we have nine hands raised right now, but Mayor will leave it um to your discretion in case, I know you mentioned technical difficulties, so I'll just. Begin with the first hand, Shane.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Shane Segesi and I'm a staff attorney in the Housing Unit at Legal Aid Society of San Mateo County. Where we provide free legal services to tenants facing eviction in Daly City. I reviewed the proposed resolution and I urge the council members uh to consider passing stronger protections. As even if this resolution is passed, such protections will have minimal effects on tenants here in Daly City. As the resolution is currently written, uh the AB two-one-seven-nine protections will be extended until December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. I'm not sure if the council is aware, uh but the AB two-one-seven-nine protections only apply to tenants who are being evicted for rent prior to April first, twenty twenty-two. And they do not protect tenants being evicted for rent owed after April first. Therefore, even if the resolution is passed, it only extends protections for pre-April first rent until December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Such protections are not enough. My agency alone has helped twenty-three households in Daly City with eviction court cases since April first, twenty twenty-two. And of those twenty-three households, twenty-one or ninety-one percent of the eviction cases we assisted were due to non-payment of rent. Additionally, of these twenty-one households, every single one of them were being evicted for post-April first rent. Because the city's ordinance does not protect tenants for rent due after April first. This ordinance would not have helped any of the households my agency assisted um after April first, twenty twenty-two. Therefore, I asked the city council to revise the ordinance to check tenants not only for pre-April first rent, uh but for post-April first rent as well. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you for your comments. Shane, were you just as uh individual speaker on your.
Yes, I was.
Okay, thank you so much. Next, we have Van Ghe.
Oh.
We can hear you.
Okay, thank you. This is Evangeline Mesa. I'm a property owner, okay? Uh how come you have the helps for tenants? But you don't tell us how we will have to pay our bills when we don't get the rent? That we don't have any break in taxes, no breaks in license fees, there is no break in utilities? No breaks in repairs. So where will we get the money to support our property? Do you, uh uh you know, maybe I have not explored things that you want. There are want ads. If they don't have the work right now. They can apply in other jobs that been uh asking for staffing, want ads, hiring. I'm okay with helping people with disabilities or children who are unable to work, but for able-bodied tenants. You know, there are also landlords who are unable to, you know, uh work. But they still have mortgages and expenses to pay. So, you know, please be aware of the needs of the other party too. We've worked for all this and we expect, you know, help and recognition. Uh you know, that's all that I can tell you. Show us where we would get the money to pay our expenses. Support our needs for tax breaks, licenses breaks, license fees breaks, utility breaks. And then we can talk about rent eviction, eviction moratorium. Okay, thank you very much for allowing me to vent, really vent. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Jennifer.
Okay, can you hear me?
We can hear you, Jennifer.
Okay, um my name is Jennifer Liu. I'm a small housing provider. I understand that covid is hard for people. However, housing providers are hit hard as much as tenants. It's very hard to be a landlord since covid. Both labor and material costs are skyrocketing. Making it hard to maintain properties. Now interest rates are very, very high. When we have to refinance our properties, we pay a lot more for interest. With small landlords and not rich, we need to count on the rents to pay for our expenses. Even if the tenants don't pay the rent, we still need to pay for the mortgage, property tax and other expenses. It's not fair to put all the burdens of supporting tenants to housing providers. If we can't pay our property taxes, will the county give us exemption? If we can't pay our mortgages, will the bank give us a break? No. We have a housing crisis. We need to give people more incentive to provide more housing. If you keep penalizing landlords, who are going to create more housing? The housing crisis will get even worse and worse. Please reconsider this. We need to be fair for everybody. Is. Is everybody, the government, everybody's responsibility to to help those um. Tenant who are in in hardship, not only for for the housing providers. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Lorena.
Hi, I'm Nicole Beggs and we have um several people who are making statements this evening. So, good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council Members and Staff. My name is Nicole Beggs. I live in Daly City since two thousand and six. I'm a member of Faith and Actions Organizing Committee here in Daly City. I'm also a volunteer food runner for the Peninsula Food Runners of San Mateo County. As a food runner, I have seen the desperation our friends and neighbors face in trying to feed their families while trying to keep a roof over their heads. So I'm here to talk about the evictions taking place in our community. We have many vulnerable families facing evictions because of job loss that took place during covid. The covid economy has made it very challenging for people to catch up on paying back rent while trying to support their families. The waitlist for rent relief is extremely long and taking weeks to months to get through the process. Our vision is to create a community where all people can live with dignity. And without the fear of homelessness and worry as to how they're going to feed their families. Everyone deserves a place to live and food on the table. I am here tonight to urge you to vote in support of this resolution to protect our neighbors. As they navigate their way through the government process of obtaining financial aid without fearing homelessness and hunger. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments.
We have another, we have another speaker coming right now.
Okay. Go ahead and announce yourself.
Okay, good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council Members and Staff Members. My name is Bernadette McDonald and I'm a resident of Daly City. And a member of Gateway Christian Church in Daly City. And I'm also on the Organizing Committee of Faith in Action. Unfortunately, I was recently widowed and finding it very difficult to pay my ground rent. I live at the Franciscan Mobile Home and the ground rent here is fourteen hundred. And my monthly income is barely that. I'm here this evening. To urge you to vote in support of this resolution. And also in support of this resolution, sorry, to protect me and my fellow neighbors against eviction and. And also in support of this resolution, sorry, to protect me and my fellow neighbors against eviction and displacement. I wish you would consider this carefully, all of you. I appreciate you listening to me. Thank you so much, Bernadette.
Thank you, Bernadette.
Thank you. We have another speaker now. She speaks Spanish. There's gonna be an interpreter that's gonna help interpret her um the comments. So Ethel is gonna announce herself.
Buenas noches, miembro del Consilio y señor alcalde Roj. Mi nombre es Ester Rodriguez y soy líder de Fe en Acción.
Good evening, council members. And Mayor Rod. My name is Ethel Rodriguez and I'm a leader with Faith in Action.
He's lived in the city of Daly City for catorce años y tengo dos hijos en la escuela Benjamin Franklin.
I've lived in Daly City for fourteen years and I have two children who attend Benjamin Franklin School.
Esta noche le pido en nombre de mi comunidad y de mi familia que por favor apruebe un moratorio.
Tonight, I'm here to ask you in my name and in the name of my community to approve a moratorium.
Um ya que estamos en años escolares para nuestros niños, es un tiempo de miedo y incertidumbre en nuestra comunidad.
We are in the middle of a school year for our children and it's a time of a lot of uncertainty among the community.
Por favor, hagan algo para proteger nuestras familias, nuestros niños, nuestras personas mayores y todos aquí en la comunidad de Daly City.
Please do something to protect our families, our children, and our elderly and our entire community of Daly City.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you so much.
In continuation, we have another speaker that's gonna read um a testimony that a Spanish speaker wrote, but he's gonna read it in English.
Good evening, Mister Mayor and members of the council. My name is Rosendo. And I have a sister. Her name is Carolina Gavarete. She can't be here tonight unfortunately because she's so sick of what's going on in her life. This is her message. I have been a resident of Daly City for twenty-nine years. I am a mother of two children. One is nine years old and my baby is nine months old. The past few months have been very stressful for my family. Because we received two, not one, two, three-day notices because we owe rent. We applied for the state subsidy in January, but we are still in process. And the Daly City Resource Center was reviewing my case to help us. But when we received the three-day notices from Westlake Apartments, we could not sleep. I was afraid that my children will not have a roof over their head. I was so afraid and my heart is breaking apart. Finally, we found help. And I'm hoping now that the landlord will not evict us. This is why we need, please, for you to vote in favor of this resolution. I don't want more families to have the experience of fear that my family had to endure. And we understand the concern of all landlords on their income and revenue. We understand that. But we are only asking for extension up to December so we can recover and be able to pay rent. So please, please help us and convince the landlords to understand our situation. Thank you very much for your time and we hope that we can get some help from all of you. Thank you.
Okay, we have another speaker in Spanish and there is an interpreter.
Hola, buenas noches, alcalde y miembro del Consilio. Mi nombre es Wendy Cruz. Vivo en Daly City por dieciocho años. Tengo tres niños que solo han vivido en Daly City. Gracias por su tiempo.
Um good evening, Mayor and members of the council. My name is Wendy Cruz and I live in Daly City. I've lived here for eighteen years. And I have two children who have called Daly City their home all their life.
Gracias por su tiempo. Que para ahora, para mí, mi familia y muchas familias en Daly City es muy especial de tener la oportunidad de escucharnos.
Thank you uh for listening to us and for your time. This is very important for me um and my family and for everybody in Daly City to be uh able to be heard.
Soy líder de Fe en Acción por cinco años. So I'm the leader of Fe en Acción for cinco años y lo que ahora nomás estoy pidiéndoles de mi corazón es que podamos tener a estas familias con un techo y podamos tener nomás para poder alcanzar lo que de verdad es honorable para las personas tener un techo.
I'm a leader with Faith in Action and I've been one for five years. I'm asking from the bottom of my heart for our families to be able to have a roof over their head. And and that is basically what is dignified and honorable is for people to have a home.
Muchas gracias y que tenga una bendición noche.
Thank you so much and I hope you have a blessed evening.
All right. And we have another speaker from Jefferson High School. And she will speak English. All right, the youth.
Hello, my name is Melissa Mejia and I go to Jefferson High School and I'm in tenth grade.
Hi, I'm Natalie Aguilar Guerrero. I'm a senior and I go to Terranova High School.
Um we think it's important to um support us on this because not only is it hard to see our parents go through not being able to pay for their rents, it's very, it takes an emotional and mental toll on us. It's very hard to focus on school when we have problems going on in our house. So we think it's very important that you guys support us in this because um there's other kids who are younger than us seeing our parents struggle and it's not fair for them to struggle and not be able to have a home one that they could be comfortable in and feel secure when they know that they, when they could be out of their home. And then they have to help their parents and then they have school and then they have to go through a lot of stuff. So we think you should support us. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we have another speaker, I believe in Spanish, and with the interpreter, who is next? Elena?
Buenas tardes, señor, buenas tardes, señor alcalde y todas las personas que están presentes. Gracias por tomarse el tiempo y escuchar un poquito del parte de la comunidad, todo lo que estamos sufriendo.
Uh good evening, Mayor and everyone present. Thank you so much for taking the time to listen to us as a community.
Yo me llamo Elena Menendez y tengo dieciséis años de vivir en Daly City. Y desde que comenzó la pandemia ha bajado el trabajo. Es más, yo ya voy para dos años de no estar trabajando. Ahorita solo estoy dependiendo de la ayuda de mi mamá.
My name is Elena Menendez and I've lived in Daly City for sixteen years. During the pandemic, a lot of work was lost and in fact, I've been unemployed for two years and I'm getting by only with the help of my mother.
Y es muy difícil para mí estar pensando mes a mes cómo voy a solucionar el pago de la renta. Porque el señor dueño ya me ha intimidado varias veces diciéndome que si yo me paso, él me va a sacar. Y entonces, ¿para dónde voy a agarrar yo si yo no tengo familia aquí ni un otro lugar para donde yo pueda irme a vivir?
And it's been very difficult for me to think about month to month how I'm going to pay my rent. My landlord has already intimidated me and told me that if I am late, he will evict me. And I think about where will I go if I don't have family or anywhere else to go.
Entonces, por favor, lo único que nosotros pedimos es apoyo por unos meses en lo que nosotros solucionamos nuestros problemas. Nosotros no decimos que ustedes nos ayuden de por vida. No, porque no venimos a hacer una carga, sino que venimos a ayudar todos a esta ciudad de Daly City.
And we're asking for your support just for a few months until we can resolve our problems. We're not asking for this to be for life. We don't want to be a burden. We're here to help all of Daly City.
Y espero que nos puedan apoyar en estos meses para que podamos solucionar esto y les agradezco mucho por su tiempo. Buenas noches.
And I hope that you can support us in these months until we can resolve these issues. Thank you so much.
We have another speaker. This one is in English.
Good evening, Mister Mayor, City Council members and staff. My name is Bob Beggs. I've lived in Daly City since two thousand and six uh with my wife. We are both retired, living on a fixed income. And as she mentioned, she spoke earlier, we've been food runners since early twenty twenty and seen a lot of devastation out here with this COVID economy. And I'm also a member of the Space Faith in Action Group here in Daly City as well. We're concerned that people are getting, as they're getting back on their feet, facing eviction. Have applied for relief, which takes time just to get, find out if they qualify. And then once they find out if they qualify, it takes much more time for the money to show up to help the landlords in their plight. So uh we're asking, we're urging you to vote in a positive way for this resolution this evening. Thank you.
Okay, we have another testimony from a student uh is in English. All right.
Hello, good evening, Mister Mayor and council members. My name is Christopher. I go to San Francisco State University. And I previously went to Skyland as well. I am here by speaking in support of my community. I've lived in Daly City for ten years. And it's a wonderful community, a community that I'd love to live in and it sucks as a student to not be able to afford tuition and living at the same time. And then it puts stress on my end and in my family end as well because we're all trying to survive. And it will be very, very appreciated, the support from all of you in to support in our cause. It's for our community, not only for me as a future, future psychologist to be able to continue my dream. So I really, really, really would appreciate if you were all in in this support. Our community has come together to show you that we're strength in numbers. And we all are working together to better our community, to better our future, and to better our society. So thank you very much for your time and thank you very much for taking my consideration. So I hope you have a good evening.
Thank you so much. That concludes our speakers. Thank you for the time you gave us. God bless you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Jim. Or I'm sorry, John Jimmy.
Hello, my name is John Jimenez. And I'm speaking in to urge the council to vote in favor of this proposition. As we know, soon we'll be in about ten days, reaching the fall. And then towards the end of the year, we'll be coming into the wintertime. I would hate to think that some people are on the streets because they've been evicted. And you've heard already, you see quite a few families. I don't want to have you think about children being homeless and on the street during that wintertime. It would be very unfair. We know that this pro- this proposal is not a solution to the real problem. But it is a pause. And I will give some of these families hope and to be able to resolve their situation and hopefully keep those roofs. They need this support. It's only a temporary thing. We urge you. If we all recall in the Bible under Matthew chapter twenty-five, it refers to us about helping each other. The need that when you did help, one of the least, you helped me. I remind you of that because you would be doing exactly that. And then again, this is only a temporary solution. But even if one family, by letting this be approved, is kept from being homeless during the next few months, you would have answered chapter five of Matthew. I urge you and I pray that you will be in favor of adopting this. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Rovi.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Rovi Antonio with the California Apartment Association, an organization representing rental property owners. I am respectfully requesting that the item is pulled off the agenda this evening due to technical errors in the resolution language that makes it completely unfeasible. A few technical issues to bring to light. First, the city is preempted from regulating COVID-nineteen rental arrears from March twenty twenty to June thirty, twenty twenty-two by the state. This is explicit in the COVID-nineteen Rental Housing Act. There is no way around for local authorities around this period. Second, it has been emphasized that this document is only a resolution. Therefore, it's not an ordinance and a mandated law. If so, then the resolution needs to be explicit in the document that this resolution is not operative and merely a statement of opinion or support. It has no legal authority or legally binding. Third, A B twenty-one seventy-nine regulates the courts rather than the landlords by telling courts when they can and cannot issue summonses and enter judgment. I am not aware of any authority that would allow a local government to prescribe the court's conduct or mandate court operations. We don't believe a verbiage to simply extend A B twenty-one seventy-nine protections is feasible. So in that case, I question the city council of the necessity of this document and why it is written to read as if it's a legally mandated ordinance. The council needs to acknowledge the public perception of what this document will do. Not only are you treading on an area that is preempted by the state, but it is also casting a wider net to affect cases outside of the state and federal emergency assistance parameters, or ERAP. And it is also including a retroactive provision to July first, twenty twenty-two. Why have these provisions if this document is really only a statement of beliefs? Not only is it misleading, but it incites fears among housing providers and also provides false hopes. I want to address a scenario where a landlord issues an eviction notice for a non-payment of rent while the renter is awaiting for ERAP funds. It is very, very difficult for an owner to issue a notice to terminate due to non-payment of rent, especially when the rental debt occurred during the COVID-nineteenth period, which is March twenty twenty to June thirty, twenty twenty-two. Housing providers have a very limited grounds to evict for this outstanding debt. They really can only do so if the renter didn't uphold their end of the deal, such as paying the twenty-five percent of rent during certain months.
Two minutes have been reached. Please wrap up your comments.
Since I'm speaking from an organization, may I please have a little bit more time?
Mayor, do you approve the request?
Let's go one more minute.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If an owner who may not be educated on the current laws did issue an eviction notice while waiting for the ERAP check, then the renter at any time before a lockout can petition the court for a relief from forfeiture, which means to stop an eviction by showing their ERAP approval. This provision is explicit in CCP 1179.13. I think the real emphasis I would like to make here is the real resolution we should be looking at is educating those on this protection, 1179.13. Because one, it will actually stop an eviction while they're waiting for their ERAP check. And it actually helps those who are COVID-19 financial distressed. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Ramon. Ramon, you're next.
Thank you. Good evening, honorable council members, mayor, staff and guests. Menesa Ramón Quintero, I help lead the Samaté Ante Displacement Coalition. We have more than 10 community-led organizations advocate for low-income working families of color. COVID-19 is not over. And judging from last year's numbers, we can expect a huge increase in COVID cases this winter. Residents are struggling to keep their jobs, housing and family together when they get sick. This is still a public health emergency. We believe in the importance of keeping families together, especially since it's not their fault for getting sick. I'm here tonight to urge you to vote and support this resolution. Be leaders that can relate to those that are hurting in your community. And I encourage you and I support you. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Fernando.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Fernando Pena. I'm the Government Affairs Director at the Samaté County Association of Realtors. I'll just be brief. We are respectfully requesting that you direct staff to instead provide further research into this legislation and the legal aspects of this resolution. And also to continue outreach to the housing providers. As one of the speakers said earlier, we think it's unfair that they continue to carry the burden without any input from some of the community leaders. And we would just respectfully request that you include them in future discussions. So we can also work together to find solutions to this really difficult problem. And we totally respect the residents who are, who are hurting. But we also need to take care of the people who provide housing for us all. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Sin.
Hello.
We can hear you.
Yeah, my name is Sin Ma. I'm a tenant right advocate as well as a housing provider advocate. As I spoke with Senator Josh Becker, if you want more housing, encourage housing. Don't discourage people from providing housing. Housing providers are in the business of providing housing, not of evicting tenants. The moratorium kills small housing providers. I have hard stories to tell. Bad laws provide bad consequences and bad results. There are greedy landlords, yes. There are also deadbeat tenants. A law must stop both rather than punishing honest housing providers in the name of deadbeat tenants. Please, council members, don't pass a law because of appeal to emotions. There's a fallacy. Don't kick the can down the road. It will get worse. Let me repeat. Housing providers are in the business of providing housing, not evading their customers, their tenants. Okay, so do not continue this moratorium that kills housing providers. Please, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Paul.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Paul.
Thank you. My name is Paul Bowdr. I'm speaking on behalf of my parents, who are housing providers here in Daly City. And to propose and pass any resolution to ban evictions without any guarantees that the housing provider will be reimbursed, or more importantly, without any real means testing, is irresponsible and has severe unintended consequences. No one wants to see families in the streets. As a housing provider, especially in the first few months of the pandemic, when we received no government help, we worked hard to keep our tenants in their homes. We did this by working out payment plans for giving portions of rent. And, and then when the house, the funds did come from the state, we worked with our tenants to help them get the assistance they needed. Go into one of their homes because they didn't have a computer to help them fill out the application, working with their case managers. It was a long process for landlords and housing providers as well. Unfortunately, though, we had a young professional who worked in tech scan the system. He did not have any disturbance in his work. And as soon as he understood that he could stay in his unit without paying rent, he, we didn't see another check from him. Thankfully, we were able to get a few months' rent from the government. However, as soon as we got that check, we didn't hear from him again. Ultimately, what we solved was he abandoned the unit, leaving us months behind or months behind in rent. All I'm saying is, and I'm not saying that this is the overwhelming majority of tenants, without a doubt it's not. All I'm saying is there are better solutions than this. And a poorly written resolution that just bans eviction is not the solution that we need. These people are suffering. They need support. How about tapping into any sort of emergency funds, giving, giving these tenants who need this money, the rent that they need, and thus making the, the housing providers whole? Thank you for your time. And again, please do not support this resolution.
Thank you for your comments. Last hand raise we see is Mina.
Hi, this is Mina Young. I'm one of the family members who pulled together. We are small property owners. And our family also started with very low income, like $3 per hour, a very long time ago. You know, without the means to pull together, we, we would, we would not be able to find this poverty and cannot afford it. And we have seniors in our family who are also going through stress and health issues who need to pay the medical bills with the rent. So you, you cannot just look at one side. You need to look at both sides. We are all people. We all go through the same problems. And we depend on each other, the renters and the landlords. And so you, you cannot just help one side without the others. So please do not cause any more confusion. As I heard an earlier speaker, that you cannot really use this as a legal action. So, and we have been through enough stress. First three months may be a temporary, but now three years is not temporary. Okay, you, you're prolonging a problem that's gonna just get worse. So please say no to this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Each speaker has spoken once, Mayor. That concludes public comment.
Thank you so much, Leilani, for facilitating that process. I'd like to open this up to my colleagues. Any questions, comments, concerns? All right. I see Councilmember Glenn Sylvester's hand up, so go right ahead, Glenn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, after hearing the stories from many of the tenants this evening, they all come from different walks of life. They all have different issues. And in order to make a fair and impartial decision, I think it's incumbent upon all of us to listen intently to both sides of the equation. In the case of the tenants, it's very difficult. And I really feel for them so much. And whether I heard the speaker talk about able-bodied persons being able to work. However, I, I'm sure there are other circumstances where an able-bodied person who's able to work cannot find work. So you know, that's something I look at as well. On the other side are the landlords and especially the small landlords. I'm sure you've probably heard the term "house-rich but cash-poor." And I say that to indicate that in certain circumstances, I believe, one of the last callers, where they depend on rental income to support themselves. I mean, let's face it, social security does not cover it. But of course, each landlord is different. We also have landlords who probably take advantage of the system. That's true too. What we must do, as one caller made mention, is identify both sides. I really feel there are some landlords out there, they don't want to lose their tenants. They, one caller even made mention, we try our best to work with a tenant, help them on a computer, help them to file an application. But yet, on the other side, I've heard stories to which tenants extort landlords and say, hey, I'm able to get X amount of dollars. If you want me to apply, what is it that you're going to give for me? So I just wanted to put that information out there. Now, one caller made mention about a, a, a resolution, I mean, not a resolution, but an ordinance or a law. I think it's 1179. And the question I have is have we investigated that particular section? It was 1179 point some, something. The other issue I have, and I'm going to ask the question now, how many tenants have filed for the provisions under AB 2179, which ended in June of 2022? How many of those tenants are affected? In other words, I've heard someone say they've been waiting six months. But do we actually have any numbers to create this resolution to which I'm about to talk about in a moment? So I need resource, research information. Number one, how many tenants are affected? Number two, are these the tenants that have filed under the provision of 2179? What happens to the other tenants who did not? So to pass a resolution indicating that this is a moratorium on evictions for an additional three to four months, who does that apply to? That's my question. Another part is the legality of this resolution. Is it legal? And to my understanding, the city or the city council who makes up legislation, and in this particular case, we're talking about a resolution. Can we tell the landlords that you cannot collect rents? I don't think so. So what I see here is a resolution to which the narrative confuses folks. We cannot pass a resolution. In other words, this resolution will have no meat in it. So if we were to pass this resolution, what penalties, if any, can be imposed upon the landlord? And the question is nothing. It's just a resolution. According to the staff report, the city council passed a Home is Key Initiative Resolution saying, "We support AB 2179." If we were to move forward on this resolution, I'd be somewhat pressed to approve this resolution unless the wording is changed. If you read the proposed resolution right now, it sounds like an ordinance to which we are casting a wide net to include state, federal and other resources, when the whole impetus was the expiration of AB 2179, which is the state. I ask you, my colleagues, to thread very carefully because what we're creating is false hopes to the tenants. You're going to create a supply and demand issue for housing. I feel that some of our landlords would say, hey, all right, I, I, I probably going to lose my place or this is it for me. Come December, I will no longer put my home up for rent. And as a result, you're going to have more of a demand issue and you're not going to have a supply to provide housing. So I would ask that we pull this matter off, conduct our research as to what other resources are out there and the legality of a resolution versus an ordinance. And then this comes back before the council where the staff report is done. And then at that time, we make a decision. But don't give these folks false hopes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Glenn Sylvester. Do we have any other comments? Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to thank all the speakers, all the ones, I have a list that I got your letters, speakers, even on both sides. And then I don't think the intent is to punish the smaller landlords. So again, with the resolution, we know it's a semblance. And doesn't give them false hope. I'm not, I'm not questioning the, the part of, of that it was put together with the right thing and the extension is the right thing to do. And I believe Rose and the mayor, it was meant to for the people that have already applied, correct? The, the people that have already applied that are currently in the system. But because of COVID, the courts are behind and they have not had their due process and their applications. Is that correct?
I'll defer that to Rose.
So the direction, yes, the intent was really to extend the eviction protections that was a product of AB 2179 for those that have pending applications to receive state funding.
Right, that they're already.
So they're already, they're already in the process. And the intent is for them to have those protections so that they would receive their funding to be made whole for the rental protection.
Right, because I do, I do know that the courts were closed, so I understand that. So Rose, how legally binding is this and how helpful is it to the people? Can they even use this? If, if, is it effective as a resolution?
I can't entirely answer that, Councilmember, although the intent was really to provide the authority that the council had the intent to protect these tenants that were actually already having an application pending. I mean, ultimately, can the landlord go ahead and proceed with eviction proceedings and serve three-day notices? They probably can. And I can't say how the courts would respond to that. But this provides us persuasive for them in, in the event that we do have tenants that are already about to receive their checks. And that, that was really the overall intent. I can't speak to overall how legally binding the courts will look at it if the landlord wants to go ahead and serve a three-day notice for eviction. And of course, it, it will be ultimately up to the courts at that point to see if they would seek relief, waiting for these, these, these funds to, to come into effect.
So, so I know, okay, so that's good. So the clarity is, it's people that are already in the system and that they are just waiting their turn. and that they are just waiting their turn to get their money. And will that money be guaranteed to go to the landlord to pay the rent?
That's the intent, yes. The land, the monies go directly to the landlord.
Okay, which is, which is good, and I'm sure that these people, especially ones that spoke tonight, would make sure that the landlords were paid. Okay, so I get that part. All right, I gotta process that first, and I'll let um my other council members ask their questions and then probably ask again. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Rose.
Are there any other comments or uh questions from my other colleagues? I, oh, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, you know, I I think this is a very um uh comp, more complicated issue than uh than simple. You know, I think i- it's of good intention, uh meaning that uh the intent of this resolution is to try to see if there is a way to um um stop a uh an eviction from happening when it seems as if there is a process already in motion
Right.
uh that will lead to uh people staying in their homes. So I think the intention is good. I think the problem is that the resolution covers more than what the intention was meant to be, which is to stop those evictions that seemingly were going to be funded later through no fault of their own, other than the bureaucratic
Right.
um um mess that they find themselves in. And so in that respect, I don't think it's fair. But I, but the the problem I have is I think this resolution is more overreaching than that. And it seems to um be too broad in scope, and it and it um covers perhaps those that are not in the process of receiving an applicant uh uh the monies or have not. So I guess one question I had is, does applying uh for the the relief does that cover? There's a person who has applied for the relief included in this resolution versus it's only those persons that have applied and have been approved? So there's a distinction that I think needs to be made. Um, and that's where I think I'm in favor of more research and more data to see how many are actually being captured by the intent of this resolution. So I need a more specific definition of who is getting the aid? Who is ultimately going to be benefiting from this? Is it those people we truly intended to cover um by passing this sort of resolution? And then what also uh is not sitting well with me is um I'm not sure, and and I'm a little bit concerned that uh if this resolution does really mean something. Um, as the city ma, uh city attorney said, it's persuasive, but it's not binding. And so I'm not sure this really has any teeth when it comes to enforcement. And um I'm 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 I I think I share in the concern about maybe can, this this sort of leads to confusion and um maybe leading people down the wrong path. Um, and then I also am concerned about the issue of uh preemption and what the state has done. So the governor and the and the legislators, through their wisdom, have sought to extend the protections, which I think is a good thing. But I want to know the answer to why they didn't extend it further. And so there must be some reason why that didn't happen. And I want to know why. And I want to know, is it because um there isn't that that issue that about this this relief distribution being done? Or um, I I I don't know, I I I just don't know why it wasn't extended and how we have the authority to extend it further when the state did not do that? So those are my concerns, and I'm not saying no. I am saying I'm in favor of more research opportunities, more data, more information to make a well-reasoned decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any other comments from my colleagues? Before I make my statement? Councilmember Jocelyn Manala.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, and I just want to thank everyone that um uh came to speak this evening um for your time and um I, you know, listened to to everyone this evening and also um I think that there just needs to be more clarity. I'm with Vice Mayor Ray Bada Ventura around um just having um more, 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 more uh we need more answers on on kind of what it entails. Um, but um I'm on the same, um, I I'm, it's not that I'm not not for it. I just want to be able to uh have more clarification.
Thank you. Um, I guess, Rose, can you answer any of these questions or?
Um, not at this moment.
Okay.
I do have some, you know, a a couple of questions uh to remain that this is um the protections were extended in that the scope of the protection was to protect those that actually had pending applications and that were ready to receive funding. So that's in terms of the scope that the Vice Mayor had brought upon. Our intent here, based on the direction, was really to extend those same protections that A B's two twenty-one-seventy-nine intended for because those applicants, and I don't have the data or the numbers of how many um are 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 in this situation have applied, and it has, they're waiting for those funded funds, and it's going, it has gone beyond June of twenty, uh uh I believe it's uh June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-two. So my understanding, um based on what I've been told, um is that we're looking at a couple of months for them to receive the funding. So if we were to look at the scope, it is those that are ready to receive funding for the Housing Assistance Program. Um, we kind of provided some of the language that included local rental assistance because Daly City themselves, through C D P G Funding, also provides um funding sources much quicker, I believe, than the state. Um, so I did include that just as a result of knowing that we do provide rental assistance. But my understanding is, is that these are individuals that are looking for that type of relief. Um, in terms of whether or not this has any legal teeth, I mean, you obviously would need a whole lot more research and probably a much stronger law to have the court say that this is an absolute that's that that is exactly like the the state of California. But my understanding is where the courts stand is, you know, eviction proceedings do take some time. So what's happening is we do have um tenants that are receiving three-day notices to pay or quit, that pretty much start the process for evictions. Courts at that time, through the process, which can go all the way for an unlawful eviction trial, can have some type of settlement, can look and see, and maybe perhaps you would receive your funding at that point to to pay the back rent, which would serve as the basis for your eviction. And that's basically what this resolution does, is to show that protections in terms of where the statement is with the council to sort of hope that you would not proceed to the ultimate forfeiture to to have to forfeiture your lease and actually be on the street. So I I think there was an established fear that you were going to be evicted when you receive your three-day notice of to pay or quit because you owe rent, and then we do have tenants that are saying that I'm getting rental assistance to make the tenant whole. So this was no way to 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 say, show that um I have any legal authority, but it does serve as some basis of persuasiveness. I mean, that's the extent of the legality, I can say, in terms of the resolution. We did not establish a moratorium. We did provide eviction protections that were in support of A B set twenty-one-seventy-nine, which was the overall intent. And I think perhaps um Vice Mayor, you had mentioned why it wasn't extended because it was already extended once, and it extended to June twenty uh to the end of June. And perhaps there are obviously other residents that are still waiting on that process because I, my understanding, there was probably quite a few of this, this is for the whole entire state of California. So it's probably not anticipated that it would go beyond the June date. But unfortunately, I guess, for the residents of Daly City, we have people who are in that situation.
Thank you, Rose. Um, Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni.
Thank you, Mayor. So in essence, tonight, how can we really help these people? That's, that's the thing. I'm looking forward to what the mayor has to say because the turmoil they're living under is just way too much for families, the young people going to high school, speaking. Um, a mother has two small children, just a array of things. Working families and are, these are working families, however they were affected by COVID. So as a council, how can we protect the people in our city and make sure that they are not, we're going to become homeless? And they, especially those in that process. So I'm hoping that we can do something, hear something to do that because they're doing the right thing. They applied. And far be it from us, like COVID just like shut down the courts. And that that's even our cases or whatever we're doing got backed up and our honorable Vice Mayor, that's his profession, and I'm sure he knows as well as how courts were. But um I looked at my colleagues, we heard their stories, and um looking to help, looking to help and support. This is, this is our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Councilmember Glenn Sylvester.
Uh, thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Um, I want to remind everyone that this is not a criminal matter, but it is a civil matter. So the section that was quoted earlier, I'll clarify it. It is C C P one-one-seven-nine-point-one-three. And what that states is it will stop an eviction, especially for a case that's pending, an E R A P check. This is what will help the tenants. So I suggest this information is researched and brought back before council with an update. Thank you.
Um, are there any other uh comments or questions from my colleagues?
Yes, uh, Mr. Mayor. Uh, so just sort of in in directing staff and what some of the uh other questions to ask. I want to know um the answer to this question, and that is, if a tenant has some kind of proof that they are getting the money, will that stop an eviction from happening? So that's, because if that's what we're talking about,
Right.
then um, I mean, I can't imagine that if you have proof that your money is coming, that a landlord is going to want to still use your arrears as as an issue when the money is there. And so uh I I need some clarification on the process and whether or not um the real-world scenario uh exists, and and that's what I'm want to focus on. Thank you.
Um, anybody from staff can answer that?
A difficult question to answer. Um, basically, even under A B one-seventy-nine, it did provide for sort of a moratorium um where you can show proof to the courts, but it didn't prevent any of the landlords from providing three-day notices or pay or quit to start the process. So essentially, sure, I think if, you know, you can always settle these cases to show that I've got a notification that shows this, I'm going to be paid. But there is no eviction moratorium in the courts to stop the process for eviction right now. So the real answer is there are no real legal binding authority that's going to stop an eviction. What this does is serve as protections to show, to be persuasive in that fashion. Otherwise, even if we did create an emergency ordinance, which would require much more notification than than a resolution, um, that still would not guarantee that those courts would stop an eviction. An eviction, meaning you're going all the way to the to to trial, not just serving the notice. You know, when when you serve a notice to pay or quit, um, and again, this is beyond my expertise as a landlord tenant attorney, that that's not what I do. But when you do serve a notice to three-day pay, you, when you pay, you cure the notice, and you don't go forward with the eviction process. So you get the notice, it takes time um to pay that, and it can go to court and starts the process where you have a thirty-day, and then you have to file an actual unlawful detainer action, which means you go to trial on these cases. So it's a little bit of a process. So it is um probably, you know, the safest answer is no. You can, you did, this resolution is not going to serve to stop a a complete eviction. It may serve as hope that the landlords would not proceed with an eviction, which is exactly what A B twenty-one-seventy-nine did.
Thank you, Rose.
Sure.
Um, Councilmember Pamela Giovanni.
Thank you. So on that, Rose, thank you very much for the clarification. Thank you, Mayor. I have a question. So if we did an emergency ordinance, an ordinance as a city, even if we did that to say whatever language we had to do to to stop it, or can we do that? Or are we allowed to do that? Or what precludes us from that?
There's nothing that precludes you from doing any ordinance. It's whether or not that ordinance is actually going to be binding. Um, currently, we don't have any ordinances locally that established an extension of twenty-one-seventy-nine as a moratorium for evictions. We can always establish a moratorium for eviction, but it's a much more greater notice than what we had provided this evening, and it does require forfeits vote of 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 the council. So it's much more um elaborate than and than stating the intentions of the council to provide um rental assistance protections. So I could not say for certain that the courts would honor that because it was not necessarily the case for A B twenty-one-seventy-nine. It it provided them to have those extensions, so the courts honored it, but it did not prevent them from serving three-day notices to the tenants.
So with that, because I, out of respect for um the mayor, because I want to hear what he has to say and what he believes would be the rest, the right thing to do. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Pam. Um, if there's nobody else has anything to say, um, I like to say my piece, and we sit, we all sit here on council with privilege. Some of us are homeowners, some of us are renters. Um, but this is a resolution, and this is a very good resolution in the right direction. This is not an ordinance, we're not putting it into law. This is a stance from the city to protect the most vulnerable people in our city and for those that have applied. I don't see why this stance or our I don't see why this stance or our position to voice out our represented, our representation of this city to stand behind those that are the most vulnerable. We cannot just take one case of a person that is a tech person that is very, very wealthy in knowledge and probably wealthy in their pockets to navigate and swindle a um swindle swindle landlords and make that the blankets narrative for immigrants, single parents. We heard to, we heard from youth, we heard from families that are struggling. And so when we vote, we vote from our values and when we vote from our values, this resolution stands in solidarity with those that are the most affected by COVID nineteen. There was over two hundred twenty six petitions in support of this resolution. There's been cities, counties that had had several, I mean, had had examples that we've drawn upon in making this resolution. What are they doing correct that we are preventing ourselves from making the right moral decision? We heard people here that are saying we're not here to be a burden on these um housing providers or landlords. They are just buying time until December. And if you want to go ahead and not vote on this resolution, this represents the values from which you stand for. A person said we're ten days from fall. Are we going to stand here and be like, well, we all need the research, but Halloween's on the way. Thanksgiving's around the corner, Christmas is around the way, and we're evicting people? That's what we stand for in Daly City? Truly, I'm embarrassed if we don't pass this resolution. We are not standing here in terms of this. We are, we're taking a persuasive stance here. And we have the privilege to be here to voice the most oppressed people in our communities. And I can't. We heard it um from legal aid that there is no this resolution does not violate any laws. And that's coming from a legal perspective, a legal aid. We heard it from our city attorney. And I'm just, I'm it just, it just feels, it feels wrong, honestly, from the bottom of my heart. And I know, I know, I understand we need the legalities. We do need all the numbers and the research behind it. But this is until December. We're not asking forever. We're asking for protections for those that have done right. People have applied. And so that's where I'm at. Okay, so um I guess we go from here, so um can I get a motion to adopt the resolution by a roll call vote?
A mo- a motion to make a doc of the adoption roll call vote, is that what you said, Mayor?
Yeah, yes.
I had to make a motion.
And I'll second it.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Buena Ventura?
No.
Ms. D Giovanni?
Yes.
Ms. Manalo?
No.
Mr. Sylvester?
Glenn Sylvester, no.
Dr. Rod?
Yes, I support this resolution. All right, um. Moving on to um, oh, Councilmember Just Manala.
Uh, this, Mr. Mayor, if I may, um, I'd like to request for a substitute motion um for continuance so that we can have more further study on this. Um or at least some of the indic- uh language that was talked about uh within the conversation.
I'll second that motion. Oh, go ahead. We have a motion by Justin Manalo and a second by Vice Mayor Ray Buena Tura.
Yes.
Do I do this by a voice vote, a voice vote, or do I do a?
Um considering that we um we had a motion that failed, let's let's just do a roll call vote on it so that we we understand the motion and it when you um and if I can just have clarification, when you say seek further move, the it's a motion to continue the existing re- resolution uh for con- for consideration, further research. So it is the it the it is the existing item that you have before you.
It is the existing item on hand, but I think that we need further study and um as indicated around, um I think how it's written is we had to go through um many conversations to delineate what it really entails. So I think that we need further study on it. And so the motion is to continue this item for further research.
And do we have a date certain on the continuance?
I think we should leave it open because we don't know how long it's going to take for your research.
So we are um, okay, so so it's tabled until we bring it be- before the council then?
Um, yeah, until we bring it for the council, but I'd like staff to have it as a priority. Um but yeah, until staff brings it back.
Okay.
Are you able to do a call for discussion?
I'll allow for discussion.
I would like to hear what the mayor has to say about it, about this.
Um, I'll I'll go ahead and um have Councilmember Glenn Sylvester speak and then I'll conclude.
Okay.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. Um, I would like to amend this motion uh to read as followed. This uh is to be researched and discussed and brought back to the council with an opportunity to not create a resolution, but an ordinance that would have more teeth in it. Because if you bring back the resolution, we'll be at the same point we are at now. It's not going to have any teeth. So with the research and the legality to include information on C C P one one seven nine point one three, I think it should be brought before the council, and that's my request. Thank you.
Okay, so there was a motion for a re amendment for to that submo- submotion?
Um, uh, that was, uh, Mr. Mayor, that was not my motion. I think further study on that end. And then from there, I think we can further move into an ordinance. I mean, I think that's um, yeah, we're we're putting the horse in front of the cart versus let's get the analysis needed, Mr. Mayor.
Got you. Thank you, Councilmember Justin Manalo. Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni.
Uh, again, I just want to defer. I would like to hear from the mayor.
All right. I'm open up, I'm open for the um the submotion that Councilmember Justin Manalo has asked. Um, I you know, when I, when I brought this up to the matter, I know that there was many examples up and down the state and I just wanted to um resemble um things that have been passed, that have been researched. And I thought this was um, and I I think that we need to find steps and ways to find um opportunities to protect those in our community. And so I am open to that. Um I just want to have these protections. Um, you know, we we put up until December thirty first, two thousand twenty two. So I um I know we have some packed agendas and hopefully we can get it in um before the holidays start coming through. Are there any questions, comments?
Just like the second Councilmember Manalos and Councilmember.
I already seconded Manal.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. If we can take a roll call, please.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Ms. D Giovanni?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Glenn Sylvester, no.
Dr. Rod?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. Um, so this uh is uh for continuance uh to further study the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, um Councilmember Justin Manalo. Um I appreciate the um submotion and seconding by Vice Mayor and I'd love to um continue this conversation in a future meeting. So thank you. Um, okay, moving on to the next item, we have public hearings by Westlake Shopping Center Mixed Use Building, ninety nine South Gate Avenue, um zone change, uh, Z C dash zero four dash twenty one dash zero one four nine nine four and design review. D R dash zero four dash twenty one dash zero one four nine nine five.
Mr. Mayor, I was notified by the city attorneys that I live within three hundred feet, so they asked me to refuse myself. So I'm just going to go to the other room.
Sounds good.
Sorry about that.
I don't even have to apologize.
I know. Thank you, guys.
Okay.
Let me take my work, my hand down. I apologize. But thank you for the attorneys for reminding me.
Mm hmm.
This, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
May may we ask Councilmember D Giovanni to uh kindly put her uh computer on mute?
Well, she's I'm going into the other room anyway. No problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're ready to start. Uh?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor Dust Mogwell and members of the city council. This is a request by Kimco to construct a two hundred and fourteen unit mixed use building where, as most of us know, is Burlington Coat Factory. Um, the Burlington store closed in twenty nineteen. There were some structural issues found with that building. And it closed and is relocating elsewhere in Westlake Shopping Center, closer to um across from the um Trader Joe's area. And so this building is uh left uh with the need of a use and Kimco has come up with a uh mixed use building. And uh this is the site and uh my mouse is pointing over that, that location of the relocated Burlington will be in this area, by the way. And uh this is the site location in in between uh South Gate, Palm Crest and Lake Merced, surrounded by apartment buildings, of course, Home Depot to the north. Apartment buildings pretty much surround it uh to the south, and then there's a retail on either sides, east and west. Here's an overhead view of the proposed building uh location. Of course, the Burlington store would be demolished and the mixed use building would replace it. So again, the proposal is to demolish the Burlington Coat Factory building and construct a seven story mixed use building consisting of two hundred and fourteen apartment units and about ten thousand eight hundred square feet of commercial retail space. It would be a three hundred and nineteen unit uh parking garage that would be constructed. Sub podium of the building to provide parking spaces for the tenants as well as the retail visitors. There would also be about a thirty four thousand square feet of private and common open space and about ten thousand square feet of private indoor amenity space. The proposal needs a sequel clearance in the form of a mitigated negative declaration. The zoning also needs to be amended and there's an attachment to your staff report that identifies the exact amendments to P D sixty A, which would become P D sixty B to allow the proposed building because currently the zoning for Westlake Shopping Center doesn't allow this building, only allows the retail those approved um previously uh where the medical building was going to be torn down. And uh that project um hasn't come to fruition, but this project is moving forward. So uh P D sixty B would replace P sixty A. And there's also a twenty percent parking reduction built into that. Also approval of the design review of the building. Um, you know, the aesthetic appearance of the building, staff and the architect have worked closely on that and will be taking a look at that tonight. The subject site is uh viewed from South Gate looking eastbound toward the Burlington Coat Factory building. Again, this would be torn down. This is the Home Depot to the north unaffected by the proposal. The use to the west is a gasoline station and again apartment buildings pretty much surround the site except for on the east where the building's flanked by our existing retail Kimco uh retail space. This is the proposed site plan. So the building would cover almost the entirety of the lot with the parking underneath it. The diagonal parking that exists in South Gate Avenue would be retained. And um as one of the planning commissioners noted, there's fairly minimal landscaping that's uh to occur in Southgate as proposed. And part of the reason for that is that we have a minimum sidewalk clearance as well as this diagonal parking that was installed some years ago and the applicant's proposing to retain that. The city concurs with retention of diagonal parking here. It's prevalent along South Gate Avenue, but that does, in fact, uh, impact the ability to install additional landscaping. This is the ground floor plan for retail spaces, and these could be carved up into different uh dimensions, but there's uh currently proposed leasing office to the northwest side of the building as well as this podium parking area that exists on the ground floor as well as on the second floor and the ceiling heights uh for the retail space would project into the second floor dimension. Third floor becomes residential units, as shown here. And then what we have beginning at the third floor is uh the common open space and we'll see some perspective drawings of this. These areas are intended to serve the residents of the building and at the project architect, quite a nice job of designing and programming these. More units on the fourth floor and the fifth and sixth floor, and this atrium is open to uh the top of the building, seventh floor, the same. And this is the uh building's appearance uh from the east and from the north. This is how uh the building would appear for um the, say, if you're standing in the uh Home Depot parking lot looking toward the south, the north elevation. The city staff and the project architect have done uh quite a bit of work to get these to uh where the staff could recommend approval of the project architecture. Where it's, it is a fairly large building that's proposed around uh some smaller apartment buildings. And so um the context of this building is lower slung buildings, heights not the same. So we wanted a design aesthetic that we thought would fit in. There are some nods to the Westlake neighborhood that are given with the sloping roof here as well as trying to accentuate the project entry at the corner of Westlake and South or uh Lake Merced and South Gate Avenue. These are just more elevations. This is how the building would appear from the apartments that exist to the south as well as from the, I say, this gasoline station area looking to the east. The project architect has prepared some renderings of how the building would appear. This is looking to the southeast, standing in Lake Merced. This is the service station. Home Depot would be to the left of this view. This is an axonometric aerial view of the proposed building. And uh the planning commission had a discussion about the colors that were proposed. There was a little bit of discussion there, planning commission. It was decided in the end, though, to retain the colors. Uh, there was some concern expect expressed by one of the commissioners about the color. But in the end, uh, the colors were retained as proposed. This is the view looking to the southwest um and South Gate Avenue. So uh the retail stores um are to the left and Home Depot Safeway would be behind this, the view from this perspective. So again, nice balcony. There's quite a bit of uh visual interest provided in the retail stores. I think a good amount of building articulation and breaking up of the mass of this building again, to try and complement smaller adjacent structures. This is another view uh looking to the southeast. And the interior corridor dimension or perspective, as I've mentioned previously, um has been well programmed. Quite a bit of uh welcoming furniture for residents to use. So the space is programmed with uh landscaping and to an attempt to try and create an attractive uh area for the residents. Here is a view, um if a person were standing on the roof looking down. Um, and uh the project does meet the open space requirement that's identified by the city's zoning ordinance with balcony space as well as these interior courtyards. It's the landscape plan for the interior courtyards. The project would retain the existing twenty-two uncovered parking spaces that are in South Gate Avenue. As I indicated, there would be three hundred and nineteen total vehicle parking spaces um including thirty-two E V-ready parking spaces. And one hundred bicycle parking spaces. The uh propos- the proposed project would also uh provide one point five parking spaces per unit and per unit consisting of one point two nine-headed parking spaces per unit. Essentially, um though the proposed parking count is consistent with what the city's approved in other projects of this uh type, um apartment buildings in a mixed-use fashion. It's consistent with the uh project that was approved at ten Westlake. And um the city staff and working with this develop with West uh with Kimco uh determine that the parking count would be adequate. Of course, the city's affordable housing ordinance applies to this project, requires that uh ten percent of all the rental units be affordable. And in this case, that would be twenty-one affordable units. And the applicant has submitted an affordable housing plan that where they would actually uh construct and include in the project all of the affordable units, and there would be ten one-bedroom units and nine two-bedroom units. The project, because it's a rezoning, is subject to CEQA. It's not exempt. A mitigated negative declaration was prepared for the project. The consultant team for the preparation of that environmental documents present in tonight's meeting as well as the applicant's, the economic development or economic analysis person and the project architect are also available should the city council have any questions. Planning Commission uh reviewed this project in July, I believe, and um is recommending the city council approve it. If there's any questions council members have or the applicant team as well as the city staff, we are here to answer those. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Michael, um for your uh presentation. Uh, we already have folks on the queue here, so I'll go with uh Councilmember Glenn Sylvester.
Uh, thank you, um, Mr. Mayor. Um. I'm going to defer uh until after I hear the comments. However, I do uh have a question for the developer at this time uh in regards to the affordability. Uh, my my question to the developer, I mean, uh, Michael, thank you for that presentation because I had some other questions, but you answered it in the presentation. So uh one was uh E V um uh level uh charging uh level two. Anyway, my question, uh, is this project going to be built in phases? Cause I see like uh 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 it looks like uh three buildings there. Are these going to be done in phases or is all at once going up floor by floor?
I believe this project will be built floor by floor. Uh, applicant could correct me if I'm wrong. It'll be built all at one time. I don't believe, I I believe this is a single structure.
Great, and that leads me to my second question on the affordability units. Will they be dispersed amongst the three buildings or are you going to house folks in one particular building?
The do you want to answer that, Michael?
If 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 that's all right, sure, I'd happy to answer this, and then applicant does have a presentation, um if the uh if the council um thinks that would be helpful for the applicant to speak. I would just note, thank you, Councilmember, for the question. Um, the uh the affordable units um will be sprinkled throughout the building. Um, they will be representative of all of the units, so there's no, there's there's no isolation from the outside, from uh from any any vantage point. It would be impossible to tell which unit is uh is is affordable and which uh which will be market rate.
Well, Mr. Strauss, you read my mind. Thank you so much, and thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no further questions at this time.
Thank you, Councilmember Glenn Sylvester. I have Councilmember Justin Manalo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you um for the presentation. Uh, my question is around the affordability. I did hear that um it's ten percent that you have um as far as um the affordable units. Um, it's it's a question that I have around um, is there a possibility to increase that to twenty percent, given the fact that there's of affordable housing um within um you know, the area and those needs. Uh, I was wondering if that was something that you looked into.
In terms of the city staff uh reviewing the project, we simply applied the city's affordable housing ordinance to the project.
Oh, I was talking, oh, sorry, I I was talking to the other Michael.
The other Michael, okay.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I'll let you answer that, Michael.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Van Luxen.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Manolo. Um, we we strive to to uh to to make our our projects, uh this one included, and this one especially is as uh um as broad-based and as as uh as affordable as as possible. Um, we uh we 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 certainly re- respect the council's um uh decision in twenty eighteen to uh to enact the uh the the current ordinance and and do plan to respect it. As for the the possibility of increasing the depth of affordability, I I'm I'm afraid we are, we are so committed to trying to get this project built um that to to further add to the affordable requirement um will 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 potentially hurt our chances uh to 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 do that. So we we certainly respect the uh the 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 request. Um, but at at this time, it would be very, very difficult for us to agree to it, especially given the uncertainty in the in the uh the economy and construction costs and and the like. So I I appreciate the uh the the question, um but uh it's really hard for us to agree to that at this at this moment.
Thank, thank you for that. Um, I I guess uh in continuity to affordability. Ken, is there any way to ensure or prioritize Daly City residents as um you know, throughout this process? Obviously, um it it needs to be fair and equitable, but um you know, the need is great within our local uh residents, and so um I wanted to know if that was something that you've thought of uh or your um your group has thought about in in your community benefits package.
Um, yeah, thank you, Councilmember, again for 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 this question. It's and it's a great question. Part of our part of why we're so excited about this project is to be able to to add um you know, add this additional uh high-quality housing to Daly City, and our expectation is that many current um or residents that have families in Daly City or or may even live in Daly City could 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 move here. Um, we're certainly open to the idea of of uh of giving a preference to current Daly City residents or those with ties to the community, but I would, I'm afraid I'd have to um de- defer to either our attorney or to the city attorney as to uh as to whether that's possible for uh you know, for at this point in the entitlement process. So I I I don't know if if uh if if the city attorney wishes to weigh in or or our land use attorney, um Matthew Visick from uh Ruben Junius and Rose is on as well, and I'm I'm sure he would be willing to uh to 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 comment, or we can ask him.
Okay, I mean, I think um you know, it I'm hearing from you that you would be amenable to do so. Um, I think it's just um really important for those that live in our communities to be able to have priorities, given um what we had just talked about earlier and the other um agenda item, that there's really a need for um folks to have opportunities. So that that's the reason why I'm I've seen it done in other areas where there's preferences. Um, you know, for uh, you know, uh, what do you call this? There's tiers of preferences, and so having that Daly City preference, um, I think uh would be a great addition to your project.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you. Um, and then also, it uh since you're on here, I was just wondering, um, is this, are you going to be um utilizing? Um, will you be reaching out to uh the unions? Is this a union project? Have you reached out to our la- labor within San Mateo County?
That, thank you for this question is as well uh as well. Um, we uh we we have not had any uh um conversations with the labor groups in San Mateo in San Mateo County. Usually, they will reach out to us. We have not heard from uh from from any of such groups. I would point out, though, that the the nature of this project means that that the we we fully expect that many, many um trades will be um will will be union, whether or not the general contractor is is formally a signatory. Um, the uh, we're we're really focused on getting this uh getting this built. Um, we have friendly relations with uh with with unions throughout the uh in other projects throughout the uh the the Bay Area and and uh are certainly willing to meet with whomever um to uh to to try to make the the best project, the safest job site with the uh best trained workforce. So uh it's something we're we're certainly open to, and we would look forward to uh to 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 meeting uh members of uh of the labor groups here.
Okay, that that, yeah, that's great that um that you're open to um, you know, meeting with uh different labor groups, especially around the building trades. Um, and um within um will you be using a prevailing wage?
Um, thank you, uh, Councilmember. We have not made the determination. It's certainly our goal. Um, and uh and and we uh, you know, we were gonna um use, you know, good good faith efforts to uh to to have the 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 best um trained um workforce here. Um, we have not made any any commitments to uh to any particular standards to to this point, but we fully expect that uh that 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 many, many of the uh of the of the work, of the members of the workforces, the various trades um who will be constructing this building will be union members regardless. But no, to date, we have not made a specific commitment for um prevailing wage or 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 any other specific uh regimes.
Yeah, you know, um, I think it's it's so important, as you know, um to hire uh locally and to also ensure that um, you know, there is um. Yeah, I think it's it's important for us to hire locally and also um ensure that there's that kind of connection to um our labor trades and um which uh you know, where many working families uh really come from, and I think it it it's just, you know, important to be able to um reach out and um, yeah, and 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 ensure that you, you, you know, um connect with these building trades.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Will be, oh, sorry, will you be reaching um out to them?
Yes, we're happy to do that, um, uh, Councilmember. We're happy to reach out and and uh and and have the conversations. We have, we've not selected a general contractor yet, so so we have not. Um, so, yeah, so we're we're, of course, we we're of course happy to meet with uh with uh whomever of the trades wishes to meet with us.
Okay, and then and then and that you would be, um, you haven't decided, but you'd be considering prevailing wage.
Yes, that's that's accurate. We'd like, in good faith, we, of course, we we would, we would like to. We're just so focused on trying to get this this project built, um that that that's been our focus up to this point.
Um, I I think that's um the the rest of my questions for now. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Justin Manalo, for um those insightful questions. Um, I think um I speak for myself, you know, uh making efforts to make these connections with labor and um is a priority for myself and folks in council. So um with that, are there any other uh uh questions or comments from my colleagues before I open up the public hearing? All right, seeing none, can I get a motion to open the public hearing, please?
So moved.
Okay, a motion. Get a second. I'll go ahead and second that, so um all those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, thank you. All right.
For those members of the public who wish to comment on this item, please click the raise hand feature to speak on this agenda item. For those joining by phone, press star nine to raise your hand. When you hear a name called, you will receive a request to unmute your microphone, and you may begin speaking. Each person will receive a maximum of two minutes to speak and may only speak once. When your two minutes have been reached, please wrap up your comments. Speaker not in compliance will be muted, and use the profanity will result in the speaker being muted immediately. Looks like we have one hand raised. Uh, a call-in user. You press star six to unmute.
Hello, my name, my name tonight is the public. Hey, so I'm trying to get my head around this housing, building all these housing units and um this is Westlake, this is South Gate Avenue, this is an abundance of housing in Westlake. Um. Anyone goes for Western Village Apartments, they're gonna see a number of units available. They're also going to see incentives, incentives being offered by Westlake Village up to one month uh free, I believe it's one month, three year rent. I just went there. Um. Daly City has an abundance of housing right now, over five hundred units available. Uh, there's also the parking, the traffic going up John Daly, which is, I believe, two lanes going each way that down and up, and there's always a traffic jam in rush hours. Um. I, you know, I just don't see how the benefit's gonna be there. Again, this would be another another project where the um vacancy rate is probably gonna be between be between thirty and fifty percent. The traffic's gonna be a mess. The, I would imagine, the the pricing of these units would be anywhere between three to five thousand in a month, whereas Westlake Village offers, I think the one bedrooms are like twenty-two hundred or twenty-five hundred or something. So um do your research on Westlake Village, see what the incentives are. Granted that Westlake Village is older apartments, however, I just don't see the the community going into this. And also blocking the views of the current tenants at Westlake Village is probably not a good idea because there are units behind those um behind the building as well. So, yeah, take that all into consideration. They can see the parking, everything else, and um the pricing. You know, how much does one want to afford um in Westlake Village? Okay, thanks, bye.
Thank you for your comments, and Mayor, we have one additional hand raised. If you'd like to proceed.
Yes, please.
Rebecca.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, thank you. I'm Rebecca, who said, I am the president of the Daly City Colma Chamber of Commerce. Um, I do have on the phone with me or online with us tonight Felicia Leon, who are C our CEO, Ross Sid, who's our vice president, Matthew Vincenzi and Marie Vialrosa as well, who are uh for uh board members, and Maria also, Marie also secretary. I'm not sure. I'm not sure of Adrian Tissia Azan with Bay Relations, but um, we are here actually in support of her and her project. Uh, while the chamber is not making a stance on yes or no to this project, we do want to know that we did set out. To assist Kimco Bay Relations to put together community forums with as many people as we could pull together. So this has been presented to a lot of people in the community already and we just wanted to let you know that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. That concludes public comment.
Thank you, Leilani. Um, can I get a motion to close the public hearing, please?
Glenn Sylvester, so move.
Can I get a second? All right, I have a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Uh, can I get a motion for city attorney to read by title only?
Mister Mayor, um, I have further questions.
Oh yeah, sorry about that. Go ahead, just.
It's okay. Um, I, so you know, I, I heard from public comment earlier that there was some community engagement. That has um, happened over, over some period of time and people know about the project. I was just wondering if the project sponsor knows um, like the amount of people they reached. Um, I know that there had been meetings, but I was wondering um, if they had that data.
Thank you, council member. Uh, no, we don't have a, I, I don't have a specific number of people that we've uh, that, that we've reached out to. I know that um, we had a, a, a community meeting where we invited um, I, I don't know, at least fifty, I would think to the uh, you know, to, to, to the meeting. Um, we also uh, have spoken to uh, to, to lots of other folks that uh, that, that we met during the uh, during the uh, the, the prior entitlement process. From our, uh, the prior building that was uh, approved by this, by a, a prior council in, in, in twenty eighteen. Um, the uh, the, the Burlington building itself has been, has been uh, closed since uh, twenty nineteen. So we have had a number of inquiries as to what's going on. So we've uh, we've done, tried to, to reach out to as many um, members of the community as possible. And tried to be as open as, as we could throughout this, uh, this process. So we've been really pleased with the uh, the, the, the reactions and the responses that we've gotten and uh, and, and definitely appreciate the question.
Okay, thank you, Mister Strauss. Um, I, uh, for doing the outreach, I just um, hear from your answer, you don't quite have the number of. Um, data points around community engagement, is that?
No, I, I don't have a specific number for you, council member, but thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then I have a point of clarification um, for um, city attorney, if I may, Mister Mayor.
Go right ahead, council member.
You, thank you, Mayor. Um, so attorney uh, Zermanen, um, in regards to your uh, reading the. I guess the uh, title for this item, um, what does that obtain by, by you reading the, the? Um, introducing it, I, we, we're not introducing, I just want to understand at that disjuncture.
Essentially, this is an ordinance to um, amend the existing zoning for the project, which is a PD uh, standards. That actually has the development standards. Um, it's as written, would, would just be the first reading. Um, an ordinance requires a first and second reading for it to have any validity. So this first reading would just essentially be the introduction of the ordinance. And then it would have to come back a second time for the actual adoption of the ordinance.
Got it. And um, attorney usually through that process, there's a first reading and then the second reading is just procedural, is that correct?
The second reading is actually the adoption of the ordinance. So if the council were to adopt it at the second reading, then it would go into effect thirty days after that. The procedural aspect is really this introduction of the ordinance, which is really just introducing what the standards of the zone change would indicate by ordinance. So it does not, it is not adopted in the first reading of the ordinance. It would be adopted at the second reading.
So point of clarification, is this approval of the project, since we're changing the zoning at this time?
This, their reading for the changes to the zoning is not the approval of the project. It's the, it is changing the development standards. My understanding is the adoption of the resolution would be the approval of the project. Is that correct, Michael? Is that why we have the, the resolution?
Well, I think everything would be embodied inside an ordinance that um, proved the reason, it's essentially a rezoning to PD sixty uh, B. Um, and then the environmental document would also be certified.
The environmental document is certified through the adoption of the resolution.
Right.
Okay.
But it's, but it's, uh, this is a um, an ordinance that the council's adopting to change this, essentially change the zoning ordinance, the zoning map. To make this PD sixty B.
So I, I understand that it's a change in the, the ordinance as far as like the zoning. But the question was that in this, um, would this mean we would be approving the, this project? And it sounded like there was some documents embedded in this um, ordinance. Uh, Minister Van Look, Houston, can you explain that? I'm sorry, it, it sounded like it when you responded to attorney.
Right. So um, a number of years ago, the city council established Plan Development Zoning Number Sixty uh, for this uh, site. And then amended that um, when Ten Park Plaza was approved to sixty A. And tonight, the city council's uh, considering the approval as well as the sequoia documentation. To approve uh, an amendment of the, essentially the, the zone text that applies only to Westlake Shopping Center to PD sixty B. So the city council would be approving the project tonight, as far as I can tell.
I, I thank you so much for that clarification um, uh, to the staff. I, I really appreciate that. Um, and um, because that gives me an understanding of um, how much more time we have to um, be able to. I, I thought that there was more time to approve the project, but given what you've, you've mentioned and some of the, I think, important steps. I think, for instance, um, this is not, this is a different project, but there's been instances with other projects where we. And this is my perspective, um, be able to um, have the project sponsor uh, do good faith efforts. Um, with more data points around on community engagement. And also um, um, they mentioned their openness uh, towards uh, prevailing wage with um, partners in San Mateo County. And so with that, um, I am, you know, um, I know we're moving for a title only, but in this regard, Mister Mayor. Um, I, I feel like we need more time to hear um, from um, their community engagement data points. As well as um, the due diligence and good faith efforts, um, working with our partners. Um, on prevailing languages and working with them. And so that's where I'm at, um, at this moment, Mister Mayor. Um, I, I, I motioned to move to continue this item.
All right, so there's a motion on the floor, but um, before I um, go with the motion, I'd like to just give the privilege to, for council member Glenn Sylvester. To just to um, voice out his um, opinion.
Uh, thank you, Mister Mayor. I feel emotion at this time is premature. Uh, what we have before us is a project. And I have to thank Mister Strauss for putting that information out there. But basically, we are looking for a zone change. This is not approval of the project, even though we have foreknowledge of what's intended to come later on down in the future. Is that that time, uh, I believe our planning's, planning staff. Will review all the documents to include an environmental impact report. And all the necessary reports that is necessary for such project. I believe to require a developer to use a certain uh, 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 labor. And community um, uh, community uh, resources is uh, again, premature at this time. Uh, and that does not, and I feel is applicable to a zoning change, which is before us this evening. So I do have uh, further uh, comments that I'd like to make on this project. Uh, even though we are not approving the project at this time. Again, we're looking for a zoning change. Um, um, I have to um, commend Kimco for going out and thinking outside the box. What was especially important to me was the Burlington tenant. To which uh, we all talk about displacement, who uh, who are we displacing and what's in it for them? And uh, Kimco has definitely demonstrated, hey, we don't uh, want to lose them. We found another place for them. So that was the uh, top of uh, which I was um, happy to hear. Uh, the Westlake area has gone through some changes. And uh, to this very day, I, I hate that divider that's going down between Westlake and the parking lot. You have to walk down the corner to uh, get across the street, but I mean, that's the way it is. My concern uh, for the upcoming project, and I'll probably voice it later on, is parking. Even though we meet the one point five spaces per unit and with thirty-two surface parking. I think uh, it's really gonna put a strain on that particular area. That, that's my concern. So I'll wait for the uh, environmental impact report to hear more about that. Um, Michael, if you can kindly bring up your presentation and go to courtyard view one and courtyard view two, please. Um, in looking at the diagram and the information, I see that the southern end of the building has um. Um, a basically a pathway that extends to all three buildings. I think that's a unique design. I like, uh, no, keep going, Mike. Uh, and I like the two different courtyards and open, keep going, open space that's uh, available. And right, okay, there you go. So up, yeah. So both those um, display the uh, pathways. I think that's a marvel idea and uh, even though the sun rises in the east and sets in the west. Uh, uh, there are other properties to the south. Which, you know, I was concerned about due to the massive size of this building. Uh, you know, the loss of light, but I see that there's still going to be some light. So I think that's uh, another great point and it was well thought out of, thought of and the balconies. Uh, the second aspect, uh, I kind of lost my train of thought. Oh, um, the community and the vibrancy of the Westlake Shopping Center. With the purposing of this building, which is going to bring in more residences. I think this will create an opportunity, even a greater opportunity for economic development in our Westlake uh, area. And uh, I'm looking forward to maybe some more improvements later on as a result. So if I were to approve the project and, which is not the case tonight, it's just for the zoning. I would, I would highly recommend moving forward with this project. But since it's uh, the zoning issue only, um, uh, I, I'd like to move forward. I'm not making a motion until I hear from the rest of my colleagues, but I would like to move forward with the rezoning from sixty to sixty-one. Thank you.
Thank you so much, council member Glenn Sylvester. Um. Council member Justin Manalo, then we'll follow up by Tatum.
Thank you so much, Mister Mayor. I just wanted a point of clarification. The staff said, said earlier that, that this actually would entail us approving the project. And my colleague is stating otherwise. I'd really like clarification. I heard Mister Van Look Houston state that this is actually approval of the project. And so quite confusing at this moment. Thank you.
Um, I, I'm happy to chime in and, and Mike can also chime in as well. Um, what's before the council this evening is a zone change that would allow the residential uses of this corner. But in addition to that, there's a design review on the table as well, which actually propose, which would approve the, the design of the building as is. And it also includes the completed SEQA analysis, which in this case is a mitigated neglect. So yes, tonight before you is approval of the project.
Yeah, and with the, the only thing I would add is with regard to the SEQA, um, the city has a consultant that it goes to, to determine the appropriate level of SEQA review. And that consultant who is present tonight has determined that the mitigated negative declaration is appropriate. Um, all of the environmental impacts associated with this project can be mitigated to a level of insignificance. And so um, that's just something that um, I would like to emphasize to you.
Thank, thank you, Mister Mayor, if I may comment. Um, I, I thank you, Miss Motherhead, for that clarification and hopefully um, my colleagues are clear that. Um, at this juncture, we're actually approving the pro, project, which includes a design review for um, what you mentioned. Uh, I think um, now that we're clear on that, I have a couple of questions. Um, in regards to uh, pedestrian safety around. Um, obviously that we are, we are building more units, we need it. I'm a proponent for housing. Um, we definitely need um, all levels of housing in our community. Um, I wanted to understand, is there any pedestrian uh, safety improvements that will be happening on the ground plane? Uh, given that there's actually gonna be more foot traffic and, and residents and families in the area?
Um, essentially, um, council member Sylvester sort of touched on the um, the fencing that it exists and creates a barrier. A, a number of years ago, the city actually undertook a pedestrian safety improvement program inside Southgate Avenue in this area. Improved the crosswalks as well as the um, remove the ability for pedestrians to uh, conduct mid block, block crossings. So it's sort of an answer to your question that it's already been done. Um, the uh, pedestrian safety improvements and the installation of crosswalks, I believe, um, was yeah, undertaken about fifteen years ago. By the city as part of the um, installation of the Home Depot project. So this particular project, and I'm trying to look quickly in the conditions of approval to see if there's anything else. Itself, I don't believe in, um, Michael, if you know differently, please chime in. Doesn't undertake any pedestrian safety implementation measures as they've already sort of been uh, implemented. Um, yeah.
Thank you, go ahead.
I'm, I'm sorry, uh, council member, can I, can I just comment on that real fast? That's all right. Okay, I, I would just point out that the uh, that, that the, the, the intersection of uh, of Southgate and Lake Merced will be signalized as part of this project. Um, which will uh, which will, will, um, will, I think, definitely have some, some pedestrian safety implications for the, for the better. But also note that uh, that that intersection, um, I believe the plan is also to have at, at staff's request to bulb out. Um, those uh, those intersections to uh, to, to make the uh, the, the, the pathway for the, for the, the, the passenger vehicles a little bit. Um, a little bit smaller, which as I understand it, I'm not a traffic engineer, but uh, as I understand it, will, will further slow the uh, the, the, the traffic. So there, there are pedestrian improvements, particularly for that intersection. Um, I would also um, respectfully request that, that it may be helpful for us to, to uh, to walk through the applicant presentation. If that would be uh, if, if that would be acceptable to the uh, you know, to, to, to the council. And, and I would also uh, um, um, ask if it's okay if I can uh, call upon uh, Mike Mallory, who is our traffic engineer. Who may be able to comment on the, the pedestrian uh, question. Uh, and, and also uh, um, the uh, one of the comments that one of the mem, the member of the public um, made about the uh, about, about the uh, the, the traffic in the area. um, made about the uh, about about the uh, the the traffic in the area. If that works for the council.
Yeah, that works for me. All right.
Good evening, uh, thank you for uh, question, uh, Councilman Manolo. Um, so uh, to add to what Michael mentioned for pedestrian circulation, uh, surrounding the project uh, will be upgraded sidewalks, uh, widened sidewalks from what exists today, um, especially along Southgate, um, that fronting area has up to a about a fifteen-foot sidewalk, and then in certain areas where you see some of the landscaping, um, so there is uh um, then narrowed to about eight feet, but still certainly passable for a number of folks. Um, and then the other one I would mention, um, past the intersection that Michael noted for signalization, the project is installing a wider sidewalk along the western edge of the Home Depot parking lot um, in order to provide a better connection to the transit stop that's there, and then also for the mid-block crossing. Excuse me, that's um, there for the residential, the additional apartment residential, um, that's just to the west of the Home Depot parking lot. Um, as it relates to transportation, uh, one of the public comments noted additional tran- uh, traffic on John Daly Boulevard. Uh, with the change of use, um, from the Burlington use, the retail use, um, uh, at about fifty thousand square feet to this residential use, the the overall vehicular trips show reduction, and and that's part of the traffic study for the overall project. Um, in addition, those trips change character. Um, retail shopping trips tend to be very low or nonexistent in the AM, uh, whereas residential trips, there are some outbound um, uh, in in the AM. So some of the trips change nature, but the overall quantity of vehicular trips um, are left with the residential proposal in front of you than they were with the previous Burlington new.
Councilmember, I put on the screen the conditions of approval that appear in the staff report with with uh, regard to the traffic signal installation and uh, the other items that were mentioned.
Is it, this is what they, that happened in the past? Is that what you're saying?
This is, the, these are the conditions of approval that the city council would be acting on uh, tonight with regard to the answer to your question.
And in regards to the traffic?
With regard to the uh, question about um, any pedestrian improvement.
Got it. Um, yeah, cuz then it says, um, the uh, conditions of approval from April twenty fifth, two thousand and five, and a little confused about that. This is two thousand and five.
I shall be responsible for its fair share of the signal. Oh, well, what condition number forty-nine is saying is that the applicant's going to pay for and install the signal that they would be um, just like the wording says, they'd be responsible for the fair share. So there's, there could be um, some sort of a cost-sharing agreement, city, because the applicant may not be on the hook for the entire cost of it. There may, I believe there was a contribution that was already made toward this traffic signal installation. Michael, you probably know more about that than I do, actually, or the, one of the engineers, um, but that's my understanding.
Yeah, tha- that's my understanding as well. I'm, thank you, um, um, Mike, and and, and thank you, Councilmember. Um, y- yes, the uh, this was always contemplated in the, in two thousand, in the two thousand and five renovation that this um, uh, that this uh, signal could be installed. And so it's a, it is a, I think it's a fair share calculation, staff can correct me if I'm wrong there. Um, but we have the fair, we have the share from our two thousand and five renovation, and we have the share from this uh, from this project. So my understanding is effectively, um, we uh, not only will we do, will we be doing the installation as part of our uh, as part of our project, but we are also largely on the hook if there's some other share, um, I'm not aware of it.
Yeah, yeah, the sharing is with Kim Ko itself.
With ourselves.
Thank you.
Are there any other um, questions or comments from my um, colleagues?
Yes, uh, Mr. Mayor, I thought the applicant-
Go right ahead.
Something about, there was a presentation that they wanted to make, I'm curious to see that.
If if, if I'd like, I'd like to share my screen, if that's okay, and proceed, if that works for this council?
Yep, go right ahead.
Okay, great. I will keep it, I will keep it short. Um, here we go, I'm sharing, and now I have to do my slideshow. All right, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Vice Mayor and uh, members of the uh, of the council. Um, we just wanted to uh, id- identify the specific site, which staff identified before, um, provide a little context that the Westlake Shopping Center is six hundred and eighty-five thousand square feet along uh, along John Daly, um, between uh, between um, Park Plaza and Lake Merced with Southgate as the southern boundary. Um, Home Depot, Target, uh, Safeway, Trader Joe's, Walgreens, um, Ross Dress for Less, um, Burlington, Joanne, lots of uh, big retailers that are very meaningful for the members of the community. Um, we purchased the center, we've been uh, in the Daly City community for twenty years, um, and had a major renovation of the shopping center previously uh, from in two thousand and five to two thousand and seven. Um, and I, we, as we noted earlier, that the uh, Ten Park Plaza Drive project was approved in twenty eighteen, and uh we uh, we have not been able to uh, to 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 implement that yet, um, and have have pivoted our efforts to transform this shopping center and invest in it, and really add to the Daly C- City community by uh, by starting with this proposed project first. Um, as we uh, as as we had noted, that the uh, this, this project is proposed to replace the fifty-five thousand square foot Burlington store. Um, it's the old uh, the old uh, Westlake Bowl um, building, and it's served this community well. Um, and we think that we uh, we have, are proposing a a, a suitable successor um, that uh, will withhold the uh, the the uphold the the dignity of this uh, of the site and the community, and uh, look forward to uh, to to proceeding. Um, the uh, the the project, as uh, staff noted, is two hundred and fourteen units, we talked about the inclusionary units. I also want to talk about the retail, um, ten thousand eight hundred square feet of new replacement retail is proposed along Southgate. It'll connect the uh, the the, the retail storefronts um, at the uh, at uh, um, at fifteen, uh, forty-five and seventy-five Southgate, um, on the east side, uh, and connect it to the uh, to the shops at Southgate that go up the hill, that's also part of uh, Kim Ko's projects. Um, I wanted to uh, to to note in terms of the traffic generation um, that retail spates, uh, as as uh, Mr. Mallory, as Michael Mallory, our our traffic engineer and civil engineer, noted earlier, retail space generates more trips than um, than apartments, and that's how the traffic study shows the uh, the the total trips going, going down. Were we to put a uh, a a retail replacement, re- retail user in this uh, in this building on the ground floor, um, that would have, uh, that would generate significantly more trips than the uh, the the proposed project. Um, the the, so this is, that's what's referred to here in the net decrease of a significant number of trips um, for this uh, this 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 project. Uh, and the traffic study does conclude that the uh, that the um, that the level of service um, of the uh, the intersections in the vicinity um, would uh, would not be uh, be impaired, um, would not cause operational deficiencies on the transportation network, which is really important for us, we want to do no harm. Um, I would uh, would also just note the uh, the values of this site as mixed use, um, that uh, that the Westlake Shopping Center is uh, what we're, we call a natural site for mixed use. It's near Bart, there's Samtrans bus service in two directions to two different Bart stations, actually, where nearby the freeway. Um, the uh, the shopping center's two grocery stores, um, uh, are are wonderful amenities for uh, for the current residents that surround us in the Westlake Village Apartments, for other members of the community, and will be fantastic amenities for the uh, the new residents in this building too. Um, the retail and the services also are walkable. Uh, our expectation is when our residents uh, come home, um, there won't be much that they won't be able to do on foot coming uh, um, uh, frequenting the uh, the the small businesses and larger businesses too throughout the uh, the shopping center. Um, as has been made clear in this meeting and many, many others, uh, the Bay Area has a desperate need for more housing, and we want to be part of that solution here at the Westlake Shopping Center and uh, and part of the solution for uh, to to diversify and to increase the uh, the housing stock in Daly City. Um, we're not at all, um, uh, um, uh, concerned really about the long-term health of the uh, of the rental market in Daly City as the uh, as the, as the region um, comes out of its pandemic uh, stupor. Um, we have every faith and confidence that the uh, that the 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 market and the occupancy uh, of the apartments in uh, in across Daly City, and especially in the Westlake area, um, will come back um, to uh, to health, and we're, we're putting our money where our mouth is by uh, by trying to invest in this uh, in this community at this uh, this this shopping center. Um, and also, as staff noted, um, the replacement Burling store, Burlington store uh, is uh, is the landlord work. Our work to deliver to them is currently under construction, so we're doing all of this without any displacement of small businesses or residents. The uh, yeah, just uh, just a few more, a few more points, and then we'll uh, we'll, we'll hand the uh, the 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 mic back to uh, back to this, this council. Um, we uh, we're, we're looking at this center or at this, at this project as an opportunity to replace a a a building that, as we mentioned, has has really outlived its useful life. It's uh, um, and we're doing this at a uh, in a, in a manner that is accretive to the Daly City uh, general fund. Our economic analysis, um, whose author is here and available to answer any questions, if there are any, um, has uh, concluded um, that uh, that that uh, a net more or less uh, approximately um, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of revenue would annually accrue to the day, to the city of Daly City from the various tax revenue sources, um, plus uh, another uh, um, sixty thousand dollars um, in the analysis for uh, for keeping the uh, the the Burlington use on site. Um, so uh, our estimates um, that are backed up with uh, with with the analysis that's part of the, this council's packet and part of this project file, um, would be that well over three hundred thousand dollars a year um, to to the, would accrue to the city's benefit from this project. So we're investing over a hundred million dollars into this uh, this this iconic location within the city of Daly City, um, and it'll create a a really substantial um, impact um, for the city's finances, as well as for the members of the community. Um, it's amenity-laden, and as high-quality a building as is going in anywhere else in the uh, in the, in the Bay Area, it's comparable to the the finest buildings that you're seeing um, going up and and being um, constructed in South San Francisco, in the southern parts of the uh, of the city, and and throughout San Mateo County. Fitness center, business center, media room, bike, um, bike storage, um, you know, uh, lots of amenities are available for the uh, for the residents, and we think it's gonna be a, 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 a huge uh, um, uh, opportunity, and it's gonna be really attractive to lots of prospective residents. Um, and I just wanted to, to end by noting that we think that this building will make the Westlake Shopping Center better for the city, for our tenants, and also the neighbors and customers that will benefit from uh, from having this additional infusion of investment and excitement, and the additional retail and restaurants that will be going in in the retail. We want a a better experience for 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 everyone um, coming uh, coming to Daly City and coming especially to uh, to to this shopping center. So um, definitely uh, appreciate the opportunity to uh, to to speak. And the one last point I would make on this is that the bottom image here shows the uh, of a good view of the uh, of the bridges that are transparent, that'll um, that will uh, um, will 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 be a a benefit to uh, to keeping the light um, on the uh, on the the residents um, behind us, varying the massings from all directions, including and especially from the back. So really appreciate the opportunity to uh, to to make the the presentation uh, and uh, and and appreciate this council's consideration tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Strauss. Um, under any other questions or comments from my colleagues? Councilmember Justin Manala.
Well, I, I think, uh, let's see, Vice Mayor, do you have uh, a question? I'll follow after if you-
Okay, yeah.
Go right ahead, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, uh, so let, let me ask the the applicant, what, when you say you envision some, set the retail mix use, what what kind of retail do you envision at the bottom?
That's a, thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, uh, it's, we, we're imagining, or not imagining, we're designing for a signature restaurant on the corner. Um, that would be the uh, the corner of our, our main driveway, our main street and and Southgate. Um, there's a uh, an opportunity, we feel like the shopping center lacks a, a signature restaurant. So that's the uh, that's the in, the design intent uh, and and leasing intent for uh, for the corner. Um, and then um, more uh, more retail services and 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 restaurants. We've got a, a really, a really great lineup uh, of uh, of retail throughout the shopping center. But because the shopping center is so successful, a lot of those shops don't turn over very often. So here's an opportunity to allow, to to add categories of uh, of of restaurants and retailers and services that aren't available elsewhere in the shopping center. So we don't know yet, um, other than the signature restaurant on the corner, but we think uh, it's gonna be a really nice opportunity uh, in a brand-new building to get some really um, exciting um, options that aren't available at the shopping center currently.
Okay, thank you. Um, so my thought uh, to my colleagues is I think this is a good project. Um, so I think Kim Ko has done a lot in terms of making Daly City a a destination place. Uh, people come to Westlake from all over, and including San Francisco, because it's such a great location, and they have such good retail, and it has, and has the right mix of retail. Um, and I think if we approve this project, it's going to generate the kind of revenues that they have estimated. It's gonna make our city more of a destination city. It's gonna make people um, enjoy that shopping center even more, especially the residents who are gonna live there, who are gonna contribute to our economy. It's a place where uh, it's close to transportation, and even Bart, I mean, it might even encourage more pedestrian bicycle-type traffic, and we are always all about uh, other sources of transportation, including healthy ones and environmentally friendly ones. And so remember, this is a a developer that we approved to do another project, as they mentioned. Um, so we have a certain amount of trust and confidence in what they are able to do. And I, I remember back in the days when Westlake was really run down and uh, really not a place to go, and now it has changed to the point where people are excited to go there. And so I, I think this is something that we should consider, uh, we should approve. It will be better for um, our economy, for the people, and um, I, I think we, we need to do something about that Burlington factory uh, space, and this, I I think maximizes that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, for your comments, um, Councilmember Justin Manala.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, you know, I have had a lot of questions this evening because we are approving the project in its uh, first um, reading, and so that's why I had uh, many questions. Um, and, which I always do, so it's not only for Kim Ko. Uh, but um, you know, one thing I I'd like to ask you directly, Mr. Strauss, is um, you know, would you be and uh, willing to have a commitment towards uh, prevailing wage?
Thank you, Councilmember. I mean, we're, we're, we're sympathetic, I mean, we will, I can, I can, I can tell you that we will, we can work in 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 good faith to to try to, you know, to to tr- to try to, to try to get there, but we're, we're so focused on trying to get this building built and getting this additional housing, that it's, it's, it's a really difficult um, you know, commitment to make in terms of a uh, you know, in in terms of a uh, of of a, of a, of a condition of approval, if that's, that's where you're, where you're going with it. But I, I can certainly tell you that we're, we're, you know, o- open to, you know, to to uh, pursuing um, that in in good faith, and I would just, I would just hope and respectfully request that the, the council allow us to leave it at that, um, at that level.
Yeah, I hear the good faith efforts, and I hope that uh, within the timeframe that we have, um, you know, from this first reading to the second reading, that there is real tangible good faith efforts in the requests that is aforementioned. Thank you.
Councilmember Glenn Sylvester.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And to tread back, thank you, Tatum, for the edification on the zoning and the approval of the project. Again, I remain firm in the support of this project. But, Mr. Strauss, even though I know we can't compel you to the use of labor, however, Daly City and this council supports labor wholeheartedly. And please don't construe this as a threat because I know you got more projects coming. We don't forget. So we would appreciate all your efforts and good faith efforts to number one, consider labor. And number two, to consider also at a minimum a PLA. I think that's very important. I think we've established a great relationship over the years. I mean, I'm still waiting on that other project, but I I I I know your hands are tied. But we want Westlake to be a good place. And from what we've seen in the in the past few years, you have definitely made it a great place, and I think this can only be only get better. So pending any additional comments from the mayor, I would like to make a motion that we approve this this resolution and moving forward to lead to a second reading and final approval of your project. Thank you.
Right. Thank you, Councilmember Glenn Sylvester. I concur, I concur with my fellow colleagues. I think this project is valuable to Westlake. I concur with what Vice Mayor said in terms of it providing a place that's to activate. I mean, Westlake is has is an activated space, but I think with this new project and providing housing and mixed retail, I think it provides a very exciting opportunity to activate this space. But I also am in support of with all my colleagues as well in terms of the good faith efforts in getting prevailing wage and a PLA done because we understand the the value that labor provides and and, you know, to hire locally if we can. And 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 most importantly, community engagement and really concurring with my fellow Councilmember Justin Manalo expressed moving forward. I know that there was a motion for City Attorney to read by title only, Rose, I just need some direction. I know there's like multiple motions going on and I just need direction.
So currently, Councilmember Manalo did have a motion to continue. So that's a motion on the floor unless Councilmember Manalo withdraws the motion.
Attorney Zimmerman, I made a motion to continue, but I amend that motion to approve this project. Given the recommendations from my colleagues and good faith efforts towards a PLA. So I mean, it was mentioned here today, I'm just, it doesn't have to be written in there, but you know, good faith efforts for a PLA and also prevailing wage, as as mentioned from earlier. I think there's a chorus around that. So.
Thank you, Councilmember. At this time, I believe the council should entertain a motion for the City Attorney to read by title only.
Okay. Can I get a motion for City Attorney to read by title only?
Glenn Sylvester still moved.
Okay.
We can get a voice vote on that, please.
Okay.
Do we have a voice vote?
Oh, yes. Of what can we get a motion of for a voice? It is.
Motion.
A motion for a voice vote, please?
Well, point a little there, Mr. Mayor, what we would need is I made the motion to have the City Attorney read.
Okay.
Read and has not been seconded.
Okay, I'll second that. So although, my bad, sorry, it's getting late. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Daly City, amending the Daly City zoning map by amending amending ordinance number thirteen sixteen regarding the planned development standards per PD sixty B, and we will entertain an introduction of the ordinance by the council.
Okay. I guess. I'll go ahead and introduce it. Okay, I'll go ahead and introduce the ordinance.
Thank you. At this time, we do need to have a motion to adopt the resolution by roll call vote.
Okay. Can I get a motion to adopt the resolution? A roll call vote?
Glenn Sylvester, I'll make that motion.
Okay. And second by Councilmember Justin Manala. So Ms. City Clerk, can get a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Boyne Ventura.
Aye.
Ms. Manalo.
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester.
Glenn Sylvester, aye.
Dr. Rod.
Aye. Okay. So thank you, Mr. Strauss and Kimco and all the folks from your team, providing us a lot of information. And I think we're all am excited for what's coming for Westlake. Okay, moving on to communications, Sacred Heart Cathedral Preparatory Marsh Bank Park Proposal. We'll have Phil Freed, Director of Athletics, and I'll direct it to our interim city manager, Mr. Tom Piccolati.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, can we bring Councilmember?
Oh, yeah. Thank you for the reminder. Yes, Councilmember Pamela Dijivani, if you can please rejoin us. Welcome back, Councilmember. Go ahead and pass it over to Mr. Piccolati.
Okay, thank you. Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council. Item twenty-two is a staff report for Marsh Bank Park Enhancement. It's a presentation and tonight's presentation will include proposed improvements to the existing facilities that involves improving public access, new baseball and softball facilities, bathrooms, security, sustainable multipurpose turf and playground enhancements consistent with the city's parks and master plan. This presentation outlines some of the benefits of a proposed public-private partnership between the city and the school. And here to present to council tonight is Melinda Lawler-Scrady, which she is the chancellor, and Phil Freed, who is the athletic director, both from Sacred Heart Cathedral Prep. And they have their design team along. So if it's appropriate at this time, I'll pass it over to Dr. Scrady and her team.
Let's go right ahead.
All right, good evening, Mayor and Vice Mayor, Councilmembers and interim city managers. Thank you so much. We really detect tonight a theme about education and educational awareness in not only protecting life and advocating for our children's future, but most specifically in the way that we support through our service. Sacred Heart Cathedral is one of those schools that was founded by the brothers and the daughters who came to the city one hundred and seventy years ago this month. And they founded a city school with the intention of helping all the poor children in the Bay Area. And indeed, it's been quite a privilege to serve just on the edge of the Tenderloin along a field that we'll refer to tonight, Lang Field. Tonight, I am so thoughtfully supported by individuals. Next slide, please. Who include Phil Freed, Athletic Directors for Sacred Heart Cathedral, Mark Bielski from Verdi Design and Mike DeLonge from Verdi Design. But let me first thank the council for your very thoughtful and deliberate preparation for tonight. We appreciate it. We know what it takes to wait through a pandemic for this incredible opportunity. And we look forward to speaking to and engaging the community in this project, which we think will be transformative in every way. Next slide, and now over to Phil Freed, Athletic Director.
Okay, thank you, Melinda. Okay, I got a little, there you go. So as Tom alluded to, a public-private relationship, we've done this in a couple instances recently. The most recent one in San Francisco has been with James P. Langfield, which is right down the street from Sacred Heart Cathedral in the Western Edition area. The city about four years ago approached us to see if we would be interested in helping them with this project. The funding was not in place for synthetic turf, so they asked Sacred Heart Cathedral if we'd been interested in helping them fund that. We did go through a lot of conversations, discussions with them in terms of what we would get in return for that. We do have an MOU with them that allows us to use that facility at certain points time during the day when it's outside its permitted time, like in the morning and during the school day when other schools are still in session. So we use it for PE, we use it also for some of our morning practices. In addition to that, we also use it on the permitted after-school use. So we don't get any preferential treatment above and beyond what other schools do. But it because of this close proximity, it's really helps us because it cuts down on transportation costs. Just kind of give you an overview, this is what it looked like in two thousand seventeen. And this is what it looks like today. It's a beautiful field. This picture is looking down towards it from our school building area. It's kind of energized the neighborhood. It has brought life to the neighborhood. If you see off to the right there, that is another part of the project. There's a small field there, there's a clubhouse there. You can't see it, but on the other side, there's also some basketball, outdoor basketball court. So it's a space that the neighborhood has been sorely missing in terms of an area for the kids and the youth of the neighborhood to to have a place to play. There's a playground there as well. So it also serves the local schools who have sports teams after school that come down. And soccer is played down here, lacrosse is played down here. You can see the infield for softball, there's Little League that's played down here. So it's a multi-use field that serves a number of different sports as well as age groups. And then two thousand nineteen, and I remember many of you, I remember Councilmember Sylvester as well as Councilmember Manala, when we last presented back in two thousand nineteen, I think it was October of that year. At that time, Joseph Curran, who was the Director of Library and Recreation Services, helped put us together a proposal for the Westlake Park Field. We had reached out to Daly City Park and Rec about doing some renovations there at that site in return for some permitted use. And we did come up with an MOU with Daly City to use the west, or excuse me, the north field at Westlake Park. And so it's something that has served our program well over the last three years, even through COVID. It's been a huge plus and asset for us in our baseball program. Just to kind of show you, this is a recent picture, that netting there along the first baseline, that was what we secured. It goes away from the backstop all the way down the right field line, all the way through the playground there that's on the other side of the tennis courts. It was one of the first things that we proposed because we realized that, you know, baseballs can go flying all over the place and you needed a nice secure netting to to provide safety to the people who are playing tennis as well as a playground that's right down the right field line. We did reconfigure the infield, doesn't look like it right now, but it's kind of in 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 the fall here. So it's been kind of weathered through the summertime, but it's something that has worked out well. And I must say, working with Daly City Park and Rec has been a pleasure over these last three years, whether it's Joseph Curran or I know Denise Brown on this call here, she and I worked closely and wonderfully together. So it's been a great working relationship from my perspective, and I hope the same is from Daly City Park and Rec. So Marsh Bank, here we are to talk about it tonight. These are our goals. This is what we're looking to do. This is what we, when we envision what this place is going to look like, these are our goals that we have in mind. So we want to help enhance safety for the players and spectators. We want to make sure that it's a it's a place that is warm and welcoming, safe. And then this enhance the players' and spectator experience, you know. As you can see from that, and I'm going to kind of go back, that's as opposed to this. You can see how this is more welcoming and warming and it provides an opportunity for a greater athletic experience than something like that. And that's what we're hoping to create at Marsh Bank. Also, another goal is to increase usage of the fields and make the operational aspect more efficient. We we know having, you know, onsite facilities that upkeep is huge and and it's a lot of labor, lot of overcost, a lot of costs and a lot of things that you need to be cognizant of, which a synthetic field can lessen while increasing the uses all at the same time. So proposed improvements, I'm kind of going to go through these and give you a rundown of what we're looking to do at Marsh Bank. And then at the end of this, I was going to pass it back over to Melinda, who will go over a few other items. And then we'll, we have some concept designs that Verdi Design has put together for us. And at that point in time, we'll show them to you and answer any questions you might have. So transition to synthetic turf, as I alluded to earlier, improved facility security. I know right now in talking with Park and Rec, you know, that there's some security issues out there with some of the homeless out there that hopefully can be addressed by the reimagination of of Marsh Bank. Improve parking access, you know, ADA accessibility down there. I I think it's very limited at this point in time at that parking structure. So we would come in to be part of the project in terms of making it all ADA accessible. And then this is the backstop looking out towards right field there. And so we place in the backstop, replacing, refreshing the fencing, the netting, all things along either side. And the backstop of the facility would all be upgraded and replaced with modern netting that would just make it more attracted from the outside. This is for those of you who might not have been at Marsh Bank lately. So this is a bathroom area with some storage. So this whole area right here, and you'll see it in our concept design, would be transformed and look completely different than what you see right now. And I think that's one of the biggest aspects of what this project could do for this space is just give this whole area back here a much more effective and efficient use of space. Upgrading the bathrooms, electrical stuff, upgrading technology and the sound system as as needed. And then here's the dugouts, this third bay dugout, so new dugouts, new bullpens, new bleacher area, elevate the overall experience in terms of the fan experience as well as a player's experience on the field as well as in the stands. And then last but not least, this is the outfield. This is the picture of the batting cage, which is beyond center field out there. And so we would replace and repair the cages with new flooring, new equipment, new netting. There's a storage area out here that we would take out and we actually would embed the storage area into the bullpen dugout area just so that we don't give, we can use the space out here beyond left field fence for other things other than storage, which is kind of, it's kind of hidden now the way. And it can be very attractive to to people to do things that they shouldn't be doing. And so I pass it over to Melinda now.
Thank you so much. And so our partnership is, I think, a leading partnership. We have a really benefited from the public-private template. And we believe that the future needs the public-private partnership. The school is a very humble school dedicated to being an inclusive community and is very strongly an advocate for children in need. Daly City has the urgency about the hopes of its programs. We learned that tonight. We see that there's a strong sensitivity on this council for people in need. And we believe, in fact, we are dedicated to the proposition, enter to learn, leave to serve. So wherever our community is, we are. And we've demonstrated that this would be our third venture as a public-private partner. And our efforts extend into programming for the underprivileged children, both on this beautiful site, which would be a centerpiece for the community. We know you have fifteen festivals a year. We want to increase its accessibility and make it more inclusive, a place that is a magnet for local vendors and local merchants to also partner and support. We are bound, I was listening to Councilmember tonight Sylvester, and I really agree with the questioning that has been coming from the. and I really agree with the questioning that has been coming from the council. We're bound to obey labor laws, labor unions, and as well as prevailing wage. It is part of the social justice proposition that the school is founded in and that the Daughters of Charity and the Christian Brothers are dedicated to. You may be wondering, what kind of a school is this? And so I want to share with you that we, during the pandemic, decided that we needed to provide food for our poor families. Our poor families are up to 20% of our student population. Forty percent lost their jobs because they were entrepreneurs in vulnerable positions. And the other 20% are firefighters and nurses and teachers. And so while we are very blessed to be continuing to do well as a school community, we're also put in a position of social responsibility to care for others. And so we seek this increased use for the field, but we're hoping to become a fixture in the community, a servant, and also a leader through example. We hope to participate in the community partnership programs. We already do scholarship students around the year and have rolling financial aid. You don't need to qualify for financial aid. You just need to apply for it, and we always say yes. That's what we're dedicated to. So if we're able to, and blessed by this council, to be a partner in this community venue, um, we hope to be a really strong embedded partner. The possible upgrades to the playground are included. We'd love to participate in that. The basketball courts look, they look fine in your master campus plan, but we know how important they are. The barbecue area in the Langfield project, we learned that the grandmas and grandpas are either at the playground or they're walking around on the outside watching the games, and we like that a lot. So whatever we can do to increase the accessibility and the pride by the community, we hope that everyone, including us, we have 100 families from current families that attend from Daily City and coaches, of course, and teachers and moderators and staff. But we hope to look over our shoulder together and look at the field and say, we did this together. So thank you, and, um, we now look at the design.
There was one other slide here. There you go. So this was, um, before we get to with the, the concept design, this is kind of the terms of the agreement that we've kind of outlined in our proposal that we had sent in. Sacred Heart Cathedral would lease March Bank for an average of 20 hours per week during the school year, August to May. So it's a 10-month period of time, uh, looking for at least a 15 years. We would collaborate with Daily City to offer winter clinics and summer sport camps. Sacred Heart Cathedral would pay for the construction costs of the entire March Bank project. And in addition, Sacred Heart Cathedral will pay Daily City $100,000 a year in rental fees for the length of the agreement. Just to kind of give you a, a snapshot of how that $100,000 would break down over a calendar year. If we're using it on an average 20 hours per week, which is 80 hours a month, which comes out to 800 hours a year. And if you divide that into $100,000, that comes out to $125 per hour. Current rate that we're being charged of using March Bank and/or Westlake on an hourly basis is $55. So we're looking at a substantial increase in what the cost would be on an hourly basis, in addition to the other items. So, um, just to kind of give you.
Yeah, the concept design, please, Phil.
So here's the concept design, and I'll let Mark and Mike, who from Verde on here, kind of take you through it since they are the architects of this conceptual design, and they can kind of walk you through all the different major points of it. So Mark and Mike, we turn it over to you guys.
Thank you. Um, good evening, everybody. Largely the design of the field, as you see it in this diagram, largely remains the same. Some of the adjustments that are being made are, um, we're reconfiguring some of the edges along the left field, third baseline to, to expand the field just slightly to allow for a more multi-use field, uh, shown in the yellow, the soccer field. That's a full-size soccer field. The field is also set up to be accommodating both baseball and softball, uh, play. So it's, it's very multi-use in its layout. You can see the, the lighter brown color on the infield represents the softball field layout. And you can see, um, there's a fence line, portable fence line shown at the 200-foot line that represents the, the limits of that field. Um, and then the existing outfield fence is largely in the same location. There are a few minor tweaks just to allow for consistent area of travel, really outside of the fence between the existing fence and the retaining walls. The large rectangle in the outfield area behind the soccer goal, if you will, is that existing batting cage that, um, Phil referred to earlier. But a lot of the improvements are centered around the dugouts, the seating, scorers, booths, accessibility, uh, and components back there.
There's these tick lines right here that you see, um, are the outer outlines of, of the football field. So that would be a football sideline right here. Here's another football sideline. So you could, in theory, practice football out there in addition to soccer, baseball, and softball. As we alluded to, we know in the master plan, you guys have some ideas for the upper area, the playground, as well as the, uh, the grass area and the park. You know, we've asked Verde to kind of, you know, give some input and insight into the possibilities. We know that we're not directing you what to do, but we just wanted to know that we would like to, if you are willing to have us be a partner in helping out with that area. Because as Melinda alluded to, we're here about just not this part, but the entire, uh, area of March Bank Park. So that's our presentation. Uh, we're open to any and all questions that you may have, um, and welcome any and all that you may have.
Thank you for the presentation. Very, um, wow, I'm, I'm, I'm pretty blown away by the presentation. I would like to, um, open this up to my colleagues. Let me see, Councilmember Jocelyn Manolo.
Thank, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and thank you. Um, this is so amazing to see. For me, um, I grew up in the neighborhood right where March Banks is. And from my Woodrow Wilson days to Jefferson High School, you know, March Banks Park was actually the park I would walk through and take a shortcut to Jefferson High School. I mean, there has been so many memories of my friends as well as, um, just heading out there with my cousins to play basketball or even run around the baseball field and get my, um, running in when I used to run. But this, I, I mean, I think you've laid out what truly public and private partnerships should be. I mean, hearing that you don't only want to enhance the field, but also enhance the area where there's playgrounds, to me, it's showing that you're looking beyond just the areas that you all are utilizing. And in regards to, um, you know, really enhancing what March Banks could be and how it could be utilized for the community. Yeah, I'll never forget that, walking through that park with my Lola's and Lola's and then all my friends. And so March Banks Parks definitely has a huge place in my heart. And to see this type of investment, um, from a partner, especially around how we know parks have been crucial to the well-being of individuals prior to COVID, but during COVID, it was really the safe haven for others, having these spaces, um, for the community. And so I, 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 I love seeing the reimagining of March Banks Park, where it is, um, enhanced, uh, for the community. And, um, I, I do have some questions, um, you know, for me, and, and you mentioned earlier, you know, community access is, is key. And, um, growing up in the neighborhood, I don't know if you've been around there where Woodrow Wilson Elementary School is, it's having, um, the access to the park and, and programs. I think that I'd love to hear more to see if there was any way to have, um, support for programs for our young people that, that live right in that neighborhood, that live in Daily City. Um, and if that's a possibility to see that part of this partnership, there is actually an opportunity for those young people to participate in, um, the amazing programming and sports endeavors that you provide, um, at, at large within, um, the community of Sacred Heart.
Yes, thank you for the question. That's a great question. We want to invest in the community in that manner, not only through the athletics, which is just as important as what we see as inside the classroom curriculum, but more significantly through the programs that we offer. So if you're not aware of the school, it, it works every summer as well. And we put together programming that can go from, uh, something as simple as robotics for, you know, a seven or eight or nine-year-old. So we would include the academic explorations that we carry on campus. And all students need to do, which is true already, is apply for the programming and they become eligible. It's not dependent on a person's ability to pay. It's dependent on their need to have their children in the program. And so it's, it, it's done in a way to entice and hopefully engage a family in our community. People don't understand, um, inclusive communities of faith. Um, and that is a really important distinction because scholarships are related to that. When we, um, serve the community, we bring new members in. And by bringing those new members in, the programs themselves get stronger. If you're not aware of it, we're also bound by the daughters and the brothers to adhere to a percent of impoverishment. We hold our standard to 10% or more, and we must adhere to it. And so we, there are at school over, um, a number of student families, 100 in the Piro Program, which is desperately poor, and then another 10% that are in deep need. It's a program-type approach that works for the city and for the Bay Area. We're focusing our efforts on local kids. And when I say that, I mean it from the heart. Daily City has about 19% of its, uh, population that's under age 18. And so the stronger the programming is, more likely it is that the Daily City residents will stay there, grow up there, and become leaders in their own community. And I have found that families will go find programming if they don't have it locally. And so we really want to keep, but if you know anything about the city of San Francisco, statistical drop. We really want to keep the children in the city, and that's really an important, uh, it's a clarion call for educational institutions. And so March, March Bank, but especially Daily City, has been a remarkable partner with us. And we, we thought it would be great to go into a different, um, direction that was deeper, richer, and more, um, comprehensive in the community. We're very excited about the field, no doubt about it. But being a community partner and being an engaged community partner is a win-win for everybody involved. That's our deepest belief. Frankly, the daughters and the brothers hold me to it, and it's not something that they take lightly, actually.
I think that, that's amazing around, um, you know, the service to give back. And, um, you know, I just, I just, it's great to hear that you even looked at some of the robotics and academic, um, programs that you provide. You know, I was looking at, I know that sometimes, um, your programs have, have, um, sports camps that you provide, and I know that you're extending it even to robotics. But I think it would be amazing to see, you know, scholarships for our young people, like I said, right in the adjacent neighborhoods or right around the area.
That's the sole goal of this effort, is to engage people in their local communities, to hire local buddies and mentors, and to incorporate the programming so that it's just part of the larger group, um, experience. I, I, and we know you have a festival every year. We know it happens right around June, July. We hope, we've said this on the original, um, application call, uh, back when Zoom was still a real deep existential support for schools and for Daily City's council. And we meant it, and that is that we would like to be a partner in other projects. We are often asked to be a partner because we see ourselves, um, as servants of the city and the mission. And so we agree to be a sponsor, if possible, for this major festival. We also just want to call out that part of Daily City, the, um, there's a population of students that don't get a chance to go to this kind of programming that we would support and provide. And so anyone that's a applicant for the programming would be eligible at no cost. You know, and again, it's a win-win for us. It's really important to have these scholarships at the park, in the programming, in a manner that works for families to understand who we are, but also what our service is.
Thank you, Dr. Screed. Uh, that was, my other question was around, you know, we have a lot of, as, as you mentioned, community events that happen with the city of Daily City. Actually, in October, we're gonna have Casaya Han, which is Filipino-American History Month, right there in March Banks Park. You know, and, you know, we had the Latinx Heritage Event at Geller. But, um, as mentioned, we pride ourselves in cultural diversity and really how Daily City has been diverse for so many, uh, decades. And so, um, it's wonderful to hear upfront from you that, you know, you're willing to support also the cultural events that we have and community events that we have here in the city of Daily City.
Thank you. Thank you, Jocelyn. Um, Councilwoman, I would just like to share that our demographics match. So while people think that Catholic education or private education is often very exclusive, we have been very intentional to mirror the demographics that are extent in the city and in Daily City. And we have, uh, we just want to echo that again, everyone, that, that we're bound to that. We cannot decide to do anything different. So we're called to serve, and that is what our students will continue to do. So we thank you for your time. We, we are, um, open to any questions. We're also aware that the Zoom call only went to 10:45.
Oh, oh, did it go only?
We don't know. I think we're still on, but I just won't know.
Thank you so much for that. I mean, seeing the investment of $100,000 a year back into our community, um, where we could use it for other, enhancing other parks. I mean, that's just what, uh, public-private partnerships should be. I'm definitely in full support of this, um, and definitely think, hopefully, my colleagues support it as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jocelyn. Um, next up is Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Guess it's getting a little late for everybody, huh? I want to thank everybody for being here. I know it's late for all of you. Thanks for, uh, uh, home then. I just wanted to ask that, I know when you guys came to the Westlake Park and, and I'm, I'm, I'm not just saying, I'm just speaking for the community, um, that it's great, just like anything else, but our public schools in our area, we have a many, many public schools, and they were feeling a little left out. And I do know that the IBEW Union, but will always make sure that they have a scoreboard that they support at that, at that park. That's just one of the many. While I think it's fabulous and it's a money-making, and I see there's a 15-year deal. And, um, I wanted to know, and I know that in South San Francisco, they're doing all their redoing their parks and they're getting grants. And they're also getting, um, partners with, uh, labor unions and others. And I think that it's great that you guys are in service, but I don't want, I think some of the calls, I know this is pretty sensitive, but I'm a voice for the people, that, um, they're feeling a little like people are coming in Daily City and using, not using, but you know, coming in, they have the money. And we, and they don't, may not have the money, but coming in and then. But coming in and then they they're not allowed to use the field, but only certain hours. I'm just putting it out there because, you know, we're all here together and we're all a big community. So I think that if we need to, we can work on that. And and that I think that's like really important. And because I guess like any other city, they're they're very protective of their own, of their own entities. And they are kind of like, wow, you know, I wonder if we could get some monies from the, can we get grants and can we do another way so that it can be ours, right? And not not have control of certain hours and just let it be ours, like where we can come and do our own thing. So I think it's a great, I think, but we should also look and have balance. And when it comes to council, I know that this is not a done deal and that we have to bring this agendized, I'm sure, to council on either way, on whatever it happens. That that we can come to meeting of the minds and we can have more community calm. And maybe they'll be able to express and you can, you guys can communicate with them. It was kind of late for some of them tonight to to her, and it wasn't a public comment section, really. Because it was just communications when they contacted me. And so you can hear from them and and especially going through COVID. But like they're feeling like, oh, we're the city that doesn't have money, but people come in and they have the money, but yet why, you know, why are they coming over here, right? So because because we have diversity, right? But anyway, so we can have that conversation, and I like the design of the field. But I do think that that it because of the voice of the people that they need to hear that if there's other grants or whatever, so that they can have control of their own community, I say, community of diversity. So because how long is the lease, the MOU over at Westlake?
I do believe, and and I can't speak emphatically, but I want to say it is through the end of this twenty twenty-two.
Oh, so it's almost up.
Yeah, and I would just add, because I think those are really fine points. That when we went through the process in person, we really appreciated the council very similar questions. And what we did was decide to do a collaboration. That if there were a priority engagement of Daly Cities, and there was, you know, there was, as Joseph told us at that time, a local program that needed it during certain hours, we just stood down. It just that that's the idea behind service is to be in good partnership. We were, we didn't, we didn't want to be selfish. We proposed twenty hours. That's all we need. But we we are sitting on the end of a city block and we don't have a field. And the March Bank, Daly City more specifically, has been phenomenal partner to us. And we have a hundred families that come to the school. And I think it's a, I think it's a very strong mutual benefit. But I agree with everything you just said, Councilwoman. It it can't be somebody else just coming in and doing this. It has to be something that's inclusive and a mutual benefit, or no one will get stronger. And we're, we all represent communities. We've all been called to serve, and so serve we must. And no one benefits then, which is the best. No one person benefits.
True, that's true. And they don't want to be seen as that somebody's just dangling money and that we just go for that and not taking consideration how some of the families feel or that we didn't look for other ways to keep our Daly City, our Daly City, right? But you know, you know, I'm saying respectfully, so that we're having a conversation.
Very much so, yeah.
That's how we're supposed to do is do that. And I'm sure we'll have other conversations going forward. And what before it even comes back, because I know this is not a decision. But I would like to see how my other council, you know, like how they feel and their thoughts as well. And to the mayor, and I'm sure we can continue that as well. And not sure where we go from here, but I do know that South San Francisco and other places, they they do are able to get those grants and and then they keep their their own, their own. So and then, like I said, I B E W, they always do the scoreboard. So there are partners that come in and then they don't want anything to, they're not going to take the field and use it. They're just going to be giving the scoreboard and that's it. So anyway, so that's the conversation, but I do appreciate it, and it was very well thought out, extremely. And I wanted to ask also, so you you're not really want, you don't want to be at Westlake anymore? You prefer the March Bank?
Yeah, it's 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 footprint is just meets, as we went through this. Well, as we went through the process of trying to envision what could be done at March Bank, and it became evident to us that we could put in a multipurpose field in that space. Then that space became more desirable for us because of its multipurpose use.
Oh, yeah.
For March Bank.
The land is flatter, isn't it? Remember how that hill is over there?
Yeah, yeah, I forgot about that. And if I may add, Phil, the multipurpose part came from the Daly City input. Was that if we really looked at it as something that could meet multi-generational needs, everybody, everybody would benefit. Then the stronger we get.
That's the way everybody's going these days, which I think is a great idea. In all the cities, when they're redoing them, they're doing just not just for one sport, like like everybody else. But back to that, I think that was back in my day or whatever, but I don't want to date myself, but that's pretty much what it is. But anyway, I appreciate all of you being here and staying with us so late. And I'm sure we're going to continue more conversations in the in the future. So totally, totally thank, and all of you stayed. Thank you. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Glenn Sylvester.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll first start off, again, I like to echo the sentiments of my fellow colleagues, Dr. Scared, Mr. Baginsky, and to feel freed for staying with us so long. And as a result, I mean, I have a saying, if it's all night, it's all right. Thank you again. I'm, I'm, I'm going to be candid here. And I'm going to ask some of the tough questions. I I shoot from the hip and I just put it out there as I see it. First of all, I'd like to thank Dr. Scared for your well-thought-out presentation. You have definitely done your homework. What especially impressed me was the demographics that you provided as to our community and how many folks attend Sacred Heart from Daly City. Times have changed, and you've said it a few times, you're here to serve. I'm going to put a personal experience, one of my children, who I wanted to go to Sacred Heart, but we found that very difficult, and we considered Sarah down in San Mateo. But from what I've heard from you tonight, sounds very, very promising. Now, in relation to both the fields, I didn't really hear it much. But there's a common denominator between Westlake and March Bank. Do any of you know the common denominator?
Did they used to be, did they used to be water supply?
No, we're going back into history, but the common denominator that exists today is parking. Westlake has ample parking and so does March Bank. However, March Bank, I feel is much more accessible. Especially with the parking and the amenities that you're going to be providing. All right, let me see. I thought I read in the staff report that the initial lease was for twenty-five hours a week. I just wanted to clarify that that is down to twenty.
That's correct.
That's, that's my mistake. It was always twenty. I took fifteen in my head and I took the twenty and I made it twenty-five.
Thank you for that. All right. Here's a tough question. What is the cost estimate on your side to do this work?
Thank you, Councilmember. This is a wonderful question. I didn't know if I should forefront it. It will take the same amount of investment that we made in Langfield. It will take that same amount of investment to upgrade the facilities as they are currently, make them accessible. Provide the support for all the different areas that we're talking about. So the initial investment will probably be one point eight million.
Thank you so much. We're going into this, and that's a huge investment. And I think it's very important for us all to know, wow, not only are you willing to put out the investment, but also investing for the future and our community in Daly City. Because I'm thinking we can come up with some sort of grants or measure K funds that we have available or measure Q funds, and we can do it ourselves. But that really doesn't make sense. So if we look at close to one point eight million and over the term of the lease, which is
Congress, Councilman, you didn't ask me over the term of the lease. You asked me what would it take to start the project?
I, I got that. I got that. What I'm bringing up is what you folks would like. In other words, a fifteen-year and a hundred thousand dollars. So I'm looking at the ROI, and it doesn't sound good. And you know what especially is important to me and you have alluded to? It's not necessarily the ROI, it's the building of the community and future leaders. And I am so impressed to hear that. And that, that's the top of the list. So social equity and diversity. That seems that that's the most important factor, but you're providing a mechanism for our young youth for later on. Okay, so I see you're quick to jump, but I have a reason for my madness here. The other issue I, Councilmember D Giovanni brought up and to which I am quite aware. Daly City has a team called the Daly City Titans, which is a football, Pop Warner League, and they were fortunate to be housed at Jefferson High School, so they had a field. However, there's another organization, I think it's the Bay Area Bombers, and to which they have to look for areas to go to, and they are a nonprofit. And you yourself had made mention that you're willing to stand down. And I think this is something we have to work without Rec Department, because they went through the Recs Department and they wanted these exorbitant fees to use the field. And if you wanted to go to March, one of like Westlake, oh, well, no, totally out of the question. That's all locked down. So I have concern about that because some of these nonprofits in our cities, sports and et cetera. I think we need to have a mechanism, not to fully subsidize them, but a way to say, okay, well, you know what, March Banks is reserved. You can't do it between these hours. Perhaps we can give you an exchange. Go down to San Francisco at your other field and we'll work it out.
Wow, that's a great idea.
Yeah, you know, the fact is to try to work and get something to work with each other. And I'm definitely concerned about our local folks wanting to use the field, and they cannot. And I'm concerned about that. I think that's very important, but at the same time, I don't want to inhibit you folks because of this investment that you're putting out in the first place. So I got that off my chest, the stipend or exchange. Is there, I guess this will go for Mr. Baginsky. There, Mark, how you doing? I know the feeling. Is there a possibility for a dog run of some sort? Folks have dogs.
Yeah, I, I think there's always a possibility to find that space. There's some, there's some land that is unprogrammed, we'll say, in the outfield areas beyond the fence.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Well, you know what? I, I think that's all for my questions. It sounds like a very promising project, not in the case of the Godfather and how you say, you can't say no. But in this particular case, I think Daly City's being the Godfather, we're getting as much as we can from you folks. So I, I think to make that decision would be an easy decision because I think the partnership is very important for the years to come. Thank you so much for
Thank you, Councilmember.
Taking some of my questions.
And I cannot wait to look up CCP one-one-seven-nine-point-one-three.
All right, Doctor, I know you have been around. Thank you. We all learn from each other. Thank you.
Right. Are there any other questions or comments from other colleagues? Vice Mayor Ray Bonatoura.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm very supportive of this project, and I won't repeat what everyone else seems to be saying. But I would just say that I could not have imagined a more perfect union. Be just, just the thoughtfulness, the the things that they considered and they acted upon in coming up with a a package. It just, it showed a lot of insight, a lot of concern, and and a lot of really selflessness about the the project. And so that's what I appreciate, and and I wish there were more people who were who were forward-thinking like that and more inclusive-thinking like that. So thank you, and that's my comment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before I go, I know that there are some people from, on the queue from the public. So I just want to honor the public comment if they would like to speak as well. So I'll hand it to Rose.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, according to the agenda, this is information only.
Got you. Thank you for the reminder.
However, I, I do want to respect the public and offer them the opportunity to weigh in at the public comment section.
Got you. Thank you for the clarification, Councilmember. Okay, so I know that this is information. And I just want to just reiterate, reiterate from from my colleagues. I just want to say thank you to Sacred Heart and, you know, the Daly City staff for bringing this to our table and can't wait to work with you all and to see how this can become reality one of these days. So thank you for coming and staying on at our meeting this late. And I would like to move on to our next agenda item. Oh, Councilmember Justin Manal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you. I just want to thank Sacred Heart for your presentation this evening. At this juncture, I know it is not agendized. I'd like to make a motion for this item to be agendized forthcoming.
Glenn Sylvester, I'll definitely second that motion.
Okay, I guess there's a first and a second. Do we do a voice vote on this, Rose, I believe?
You can do a voice vote. It's just to put it on the agenda.
Got you. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Manala for putting that. Okay. Let's move to approval of written response to two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two San Mateo County Civil Grand Jury Report. A delicate balance between knowledge and power, government transparency, and the public's right to know. So go ahead, Rose.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. This item is before you for just the approval of the written responses that is attached to your staff report in regards to the grand jury report regarding a delicate balance between knowledge and power, government transparency, and the public rights to know. This was a report that was done by the grand jury that interviewed several of the city attorneys, city managers, as well as city clerks in regards to the burden on government regarding the public records. The findings, as noted, the city is agreeable to, as you will note, that the city does not have a P R A policy that's expressly written. All the public records requests are done and submitted to the city, and they eventually are done by the city attorney's office. So we are agreeable to have a citywide public records, internal policies and procedures to create more consistency in the Public Records Act. The police department currently does have a records management and release policy in place. Secondly, one of the findings is that the city does have a commercially available software application to include in our web To include in our web portal. We do have that in place. And the third finding is that um, the city review and consider adopting a record management practice analogous to the city of San Mateo. Is called Records Cleanup Day. Um, the city will be amenable to that and report back to the grand jury. Um, it does require some costs associated, so we do want to explore that further. It does streamline it a bit, but it's something that the city will definitely be amenable to. With that, um, I am just requesting that the council approve the draft written response to be submitted to the presiding judge at this time.
Thank you, Rose. Um, so with that, can we get a, a motion to approve um, this report?
Motion to approve this report.
Second.
Okay.
And a voice vote is fine.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you, Rose. Thank you, everyone. Okay, moving down to uh, considering partnership with the University of the Philippines Alumni Association of San Francisco. Fiesta and Daily City event at Geller Park. I'll hand it over to Stephen.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, uh, Mayor and members of the city council. We have a proposal from the University of the Philippines Alumni Association in San Francisco. Um, to partner with them on a fiesta event at Geller Park on Sunday, September twenty-fifth. From ten AM to four PM. And actually, the hours have been updated since the staff report was put through the agenda process. Um, they would like to reserve the picnic shelter area, the entire area for the day. And as a partner, we would host the event at Geller Park, coordinate a hepatitis B testing service, which is still underway. And help promote the event on um, digitally through our social media. Um, the partnership includes Alumni Association. We actually have three representatives uh, for this organizing committee. From the Alumni Association with us tonight. It's uh, Lisa Gina, the president. We have Edselin Pujol, who um, is most likely available for comment. I see her face here in the meeting. She's the chair for this event. And then we have Chato Calderon. She's the executive VP. Um, so the partnership includes that group. Um, and it would potentially include the city and the Filipino food movement. Um, and it's aimed to highlight the unique and delightful Filipino fusion cuisines in multicultural um, city like ours. And um, there would also be a program, and I'm sure the event organizers can talk to that a little more, but um, of.
You do. Oh, thank you. Yeah.
Yeah.
Of community-focused uh, programs and educational opportunities. And there would be a variety of food booths and food trucks. So tonight, um, the council could consider becoming an official event partner, waiving the fees. Uh, the rental fees would amount to about seven hundred and forty-four dollars. Um, that includes three hundred and fifty for the rental, a hundred and forty-four for a insurance fee. And then a refundable deposit fee of two hundred and fifty dollars. If we waive the fee, the city would ensure the event under our own policy. Um, and then uh, there are some other stipulations, especially for the food vendors. Uh, that come from the County of San Mateo Environmental Health. We don't really have the power to waive those. They're mostly health-focused. Um, but most food trucks are already aware of those uh, requirements. And we pass that information on to the Alumni Association as well. So um, staff is just recommending that the council provide us with direction. On the event partnership and fee waiver waivers. And we have um, those, those three ladies here tonight. If they, if you'd like to ask them any questions.
Thank you, Stephen. So um, if we have any of the organizers would like to um. Say something on the behalf. If not, I'll go ahead and pass it over to Councilmember Justin Manala.
Thank you so much, uh.
Oh, there you go. Nice. Okay.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, um, Rod, um, Klaus, um, Paul, um, Vice Mayor, uh, Ray, Benaventura. Councilmembers and city staff members. I am Lisa Hino, a resident of Daly City. And I am the U P, University of the Philippines Alumni Association of San Francisco President. The U P A A S F was incorporated in Daly City in nineteen seventy-three. And serves as a premier lead for organized activity of the University of the Philippines alumni. We support by fundraising for significant projects and has been robust in its missions, mission towards community involvement. Our organization is having an event at Geller Park that is open to the public on September twenty-five. We are having a community-building event that takes care of your health and your financial well-being. In collaboration with the Rotary Club of Daly City Colby Evening and San Francisco Hepatitis B Free. We will be offering hepatitis B awareness by education and screening on-site. Um, you may not know, but undiagnosed hepatitis B becomes liver cancer. And um, we are also in collaboration with Rotacare that is providing free walk-in clinics. Every Monday in Daly City, just right across from City Hall. And um, um, and the Filipinos and all Asian, um, Asians, mostly Asians. Are highly susceptible to um, having hepatitis B. So that's why this is our, um, this is actually our, uh, our, our target market for hepatitis B. And in collaboration with SCORE, we will be providing free mentorship program for entrepreneurs and small businesses. SCORE is a resource partner of the Small Business Administration. And offers free confidential, one-on-one, and unlimited business mentoring. So we are definitely um, doing our best to build the community. And um, collaborate with, as you can see, we have multi um, multi organizations collaborating with us. And I think this is sign of, of a true sign of community building here. And I could defer to my um, my colleagues, Chato Calderon and Edselin. To speak more about it. Thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to present this to you. And thank you for being our partner.
Thank you, Liza. Um, Edselin, if you'd like to go ahead and share, feel free to, um, yes.
Thank you. This is Edselin Pahol, and I'm the chair for this event, as well as a U P A A S F board member. You know, U P A A S F's strength is our members' common goal to give back to the community. So this fiesta in Daly City event is an opportunity for us to connect with the Daly City community. Through a celebration, through celebration and food. We will, uh, we plan to introduce the community to the many projects that we have. Such as the summer camp for kids, our disaster relief program. Uh, we'll talk about our successful COVID test kit donation and more. And what we'd like is for the community to have an opportunity to get involved. And receive information on our programs that have the social, cultural, biz, and business entrepreneurial impact. So we ask that Daly City Council approve this partnership, fiesta in Daly City with us. And with our other partner, the Filipino Food Movement. Thank you.
Thank you, Edselin. I'll go ahead and, um, go ahead, um, Chato, um, Calderon.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, my name is Chato Calderon. I'm a resident of Daly City. And um, E V P of the Alumni Association. One of our goals is to help the small businesses in our area. And in, in this event, we're having a booth of the San Francisco SCORE, where I am also the vice chair for community engagement. So I would like to promote our SCORE uh, partnership as well with the Daly City. So that we can help your small, your small businesses uh, thrive and survive, especially during this time. Uh, we serve entrepreneurs, startups, small businesses, and nonprofits in San Francisco, San Mateo, and Marin Counties. And our volunteers like me are retired and active professionals with successful experience in corporate executives. Uh, entrepreneurs, investors, and leaders of small uh, nonprofit uh, organizations. The, our volunteerism is our way of giving back to the community. So we look forward to your support of this event. So we can um, share with you our, our, our goals of helping the small businesses. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Calderon. I'll go ahead and open up to my colleagues, Councilmember Justin Manalo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and you, thank you so much for being here, Liza, Chato, um, and also Edselin. Um, for providing us with um, information about your event and really the root cause of community service. Um, in the Daly City community and beyond, and your interest in partnering with the city of Daly City. Um, it's als- always wonderful to hear when organizations come together, not only just one, but multiple organizations. Um, to give back, whether it's in the health field, um, whether it's supporting small businesses. Um, also being able to um, highlight um, cultures such as the Filipino cuisine. I mean, there's a whole gamut um, of um, an array of programs that you've well thought out about. And really having it in Daly City, learning the fact that it was incorporated right here in the city of Daly City. It's pretty amazing to hear um, how long your organization has been going. Um, I've seen the work that you all have done um, from serving also the very young. Um, it with your uh, you know, cultural camps, which have been really amazing to see in the past as well. Um, I think um, you know, as I, I urge my colleagues to support such uh, uh, amazing community. And endeavor um, that is open. And you've mentioned, this is open to um, anyone, right? Um, that uh, would be uh, able to join at Geller Park. Um, I know that um, you all are also needing um, support in the county um, in the past, just to let you all know. And maybe this is, the SCORE, SCORE can share this, that the county has waived uh, fees for restaurants in the past. Because of the COVID, COVID pandemic um, to help them for several years. So if that's something that you, you can also share with um, your constituents or small businesses. That's has been um, you know, something that the county has provided. Um, and maybe there are small businesses that may avail of that news. Um, but in closing, um, th- this is a wonderful opportunity to be in community. After um, such a hiatus of the uh, COVID. And uh, bringing people together is always beautiful, providing them educational resources um, for health, small business. And also just self-empowerment is a wonderful. I'm a proponent to um, support this endeavor. And I hope my colleagues will partner as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Jesslyn. Um, your words, Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni.
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, Ms. Liza, how are you? See you all the time now. And thank you, Ms. Calderon and uh, Ms. Edselin. Thank you all. I know very familiar with your work. And I think it's about time that you come here, uh, where you've been, but you're here now and partner with our city. And I didn't know what policies at first. I kept thinking, what policies? Because when I was reading the report, do we have or do we need a policy to waive the fees? Um, you know, because we want to make sure that, you know, that you guys are, you know, successful in your endeavor and your whatever, I'm sure. Because you're very organized, I already know that. And I know it from my friends who uh, attended. I believe that was other event at Comer or something that I was unable to get, come to. I think you guys had some event over there. And my friend Grace David uh, had attended. And uh, you guys are always doing great things everywhere. So I'm in full support of uh, our city and look forward to the event. And I love the fact that, you know, during COVID, I think I heard a doctor say, we paid attention to COVID. We paid attention to certain diseases, but it overlooked a lot of it. And one of them is hepatitis B. And um, you don't hear much about it during, you know, these past few, you know, during the time that we've done this COVID. So I do hope that people come. I personally will help support, trying to help get the word out to um, to the people that I know. And in my church as well and, and um, anywhere I go. Because I think it's so important that we neglect our health and we don't know, really know what's going on. The fact that you're going to bring it here so close and walking distance for a lot of people as well. So um, that's really, really, really important. So Rose, what do we have that, that, that they have to do that for the waiver? Do they have to do anything or we just say yes? We just say yes.
I lost connection. Um, it's, it's just really up to the council. That's why it's before the council.
Okay, but and we've done it before, right?
Yes, we have.
Yeah, see, perfect timing. But anyway, I, I'm in full support and I'm looking for, and the, the fact that you guys stayed here this late. Wow, 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 wow. That says reason, that tells a lot about a- all of you. Okay, so I'm looking forward to it. Full support. Let's do it. I know you guys are really excited. I'm excited. And the community will benefit from this. So thank you for even coming here and letting us be a part of it. Really, really humbled. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Pam. Um, next, uh, Councilmember Glenn Sylvester.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, good evening, uh, ladies. Um, my question, and of course, I ask the hard questions. And my question has already been answered. And basically, I was going to ask, uh, has this ever been done before in the city? Waiving its fees and providing a place. And to my understanding, they have. And the reason I was going to ask that question based upon the response that I received. Is to commend you all. Because I have a saying, if you don't ask, you don't get. And you definitely ask. And not only that, I'm impressed with the collaboration that you have with other organizations. And, and as far as I'm concerned, you're blazing the path for others to follow. So let the public understand, uh, you have to ask. And it has to be good intentions, and that has definitely been shown here tonight. So I wish you the best in your event. Merami, merami, salamat po. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Glenn. Uh, Councilmember Justin Manal.
Um, Mr. Mayor, um, if there's any other comments, I'll, I'll wait until um, the end. I'll wait to see if any other, any other of our colleagues.
All right.
Um, no, Mr. Mayor, I'm good. I support, so everything's.
Yes, I support as well. So go ahead, Jess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So with that said, um, I move to approve this item on the agenda. Uh, so that we can partner uh, with the U P Alumni Association.
Second.
Okay, we have first and second. I guess we'll just do a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, just to make it official, I guess. Well, congratulations. We'll, uh, probably see you at the, on the twenty-fifth. So congratulations. And um, it's a very, very important event that we could just have fun, but also that there are health, um.
Yes.
You know, to talk about uh, health issues that are in our community as well. Okay.
Thank you very much. I, I really appreciate it. Thank you. And see you all on September twenty-fifth.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so going to uh, awards of bids and contracts, award of construction contract for the Mission Street Scape project. And I'll hand it over to our staff, Roland. Yep.
Go ahead, Roland.
Okay, thank you.
We'll keep it short.
Uh, yes, we will. Uh, good evening, honorable mayor, vice mayor, and uh, city council. Uh, staff would like to present the award of construction contract for the Mission Street Street Scape project. Uh, the background is similar to the previous Mission Street Street Scape Record number fourteen. Uh, the project is a pedestrian safety and street beautification project for Mission Street. Other improvements include winding of uh, median and extending some intersection. Installation of median landscaping and irrigation system, bullbacks, curb ramps, high visibility crosswalks. Improved pedestrian signage, rectangular rapid flashing beacons and pedestrian lights. Uh, this is a heavily utilized pedestrian corridor with demonstrated history of pedestrian and vehicle collisions. So uh, these improvements will shorten crosswalk distances and provide pedestrian refuges. And then narrower vehicle lanes also have a calming effect and encourage motorists to drive slower. Uh, the city council previously accepted and appropriated two grants for the project. Uh the City Council previously accepted and appropriated two grants for the project and eight hundred and ten thousand dollar Measure A grant and the four hundred thousand Transportation Development Act Article Three grant. Uh the construction bids were prepared in-house by engineering staff and by two consultants, T J K M and Gates and Associates. Uh they were advertised and seven bids were received ranging from one point four million to one point nine seven million dollars. And it was determined uh by the lowest of the total bids. Speseto Engineering has been in the business since nineteen ninety-four, holds the required Class A contractor's license, has provided acceptable work for Country Coast County and the city of San Leandro. Uh the bid for this project was higher than our uh engineer's estimate by twenty percent. Uh staff found the bid reasonable based on the current construction industry market. If approved, the project would begin construction in October twenty-two and be completed by spring twenty-three. Bath has sent mailers to businesses notifying them of the project and additional additional mailers will be sent from the city and contractors uh to notify them to start construction. Uh we will do additional outreach through our city's website and social media. The estimated construction is uh one point eight three five million dollars. And this includes the one point four million five hundred twenty-nine and five cents of the construction contract and thirty-one percent for the contingency inspection and construction administration. And there are available funds in project accounts for the Mission Street Streetscape, crossroad improvements, and ADA sidewalk improvements. Uh in summary and conclusion, the staff would like to recommend the City Council approve the design documents for the Mission Street Streetscape improvements, affirm the secret determination of categorical exemption, accept all bids and award the construction contract to Speseto Engineering Inc. of Livermore, California in an amount of one million four hundred thousand five hundred twenty-nine dollars and five cents, and authorize the city man- interim city manager to execute all contracts to complete the project. Staff is available to answer any additional information desired by the mayor or City Council members.
Thank you, Roland, for your presentation. Um I'll go ahead and open it up to my colleagues for any types of questions or comments. All right, seeing none. Um can I get a motion to adopt this uh resolution by roll call vote, please? Oh, my bad. Uh Councilmember Justin Manalo, go ahead.
Okay, um I I will move on with this, but um I do have a question, comment, um something that I know Vice Mayor has asked in the past in regards to our bidding process and ensuring that we've reached out to kind of local business enterprises and that there's uh more equitable um you know, opportunities um and that we make sure that there's that type of processes. And so um I just wanted to just ask if I know in the past we were working on it. I just wanted to make sure that that was still um kind of um in the works in regards to um ensuring that we reach out to local businesses and um local business enterprises and minority owned businesses as well.
Uh yes, uh thank you uh for the question, Mayor Manalo, uh Councilmember Manalo. Um yes, uh what we have uh done uh is uh as part of our advertisement process, um the project goes out to uh plan holders' list and um it's it's advertised. But in addition to that, um we also reach out to uh plan holders um that are specifically targeting us uh smaller disadvantaged minority owned businesses. Um so so we have implemented that as part of our standard practice in terms of um advertisements for our public works uh type projects. And so that was that was done as well uh for this project.
Director Chu, thank you so much. I uh really appreciate you um confirming that that implementation of that um has occurred and that that is part of the process now. Um as as um that is a deep commitment we have um to ensuring that there's outreaches to exactly what you mentioned, disadvantaged minority owned businesses. Um so I uh kudos to that, and we look forward to seeing how how that um is tracked. Thank you.
Thank you, um Jesslyn. Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni.
I'll make it really quick. Thank you, Mr. Chu. I believe that Mr. Chu said that that one time, you also make sure that they they um have uh they pay at least prevailing wages when we do any kind of contracting.
Uh uh Councilmember Di Giovanni, um for for us being a public agency, uh we we do have requirements in regards to uh paying uh yeah, paying wages, so.
Okay, great. And making sure they have workers. Thank you. And thank you. Great presentation, Roland. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for our comments and questions from my colleagues.
Ready.
Can I get a a motion to adopt the resolution um by roll call vote, please?
Motion to adopt resolution.
Second.
The city clerk, if you can conduct a roll, conduct roll call vote, please.
Mr. Bray Ventura.
Aye.
Ms. D. Giovanni.
Aye.
Ms. Manalo.
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester.
Ben Sylvester, aye.
Dr. Rod.
Aye. Thank you, everyone. All right.
Thank you.
Wow.
Okay, so moving on to public appearance. We're almost there. We're almost there. Uh public appearances and oral communications. So I'll I'll hand this over to Leilani.
In accordance with the Brown Act laws governing regular meetings, the City Council is not authorized to speak to or take action on any other items in this meeting. Members of the public who wish to comment may click the raise hand feature to raise your hand to speak. For those joining by phone, press star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute. It is important to note that staff will announce the name of the last person whose hand was raised upon calling for public comment, and that person will be the last verbal comment. If any additional speakers move after the last called speaker, the mayor will continue to allow public comment if time allows. Otherwise, public comment may be emailed to cityclerk@dailycity.org to be added to the record and shared with the City Council. When you hear your name called, staff will send you a request to unmute your microphone and you may begin speaking. Each person will receive a maximum of two minutes to speak once. When your two minutes have been reached, we ask that you wrap up your comments. Speakers on a compliance will be muted. Any use of profanity will result in the speaker being muted immediately. It looks like we have three hands raised with the last speaker being uh the sixth call in user. Uh first speaker we have is Lindsay.
Good evening, or should I say almost good morning, uh Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. Uh my name is Lindsay Reich and I am the CEO of Warm Water Wellness. I um I've spoken here once before and um as Councilman, as Councilmember Sylvester said, uh if you don't ask, you don't get. So I am back again asking. So hopefully, I will get, we will get um a resolution from your council for uh supporting our efforts to reopen the Mickelson Therapy Pool in San Mateo. Um since I last appeared here, uh we've so sorry, someone is calling me at the moment. Can you, can you still hear me? Can you still hear me? Okay, sorry. Um since I last uh appeared, we've had a few more resolutions um passed. We now have uh ten resolutions from city councils and we have um two our agendas tomorrow. Belmont, the city of Belmont and the city of Menlo Park have resolutions supporting our cause on their agendas tomorrow night. And uh we just, I, it's hard to emphasize the urgency of this. Um our goal is to get, we're we're on, we're pretty close to getting all the cities in the entire county on um. We're on track to to getting all the cities in the county supporting our cause. So um if you could put this on your next agenda, we'd really appreciate it. Supervisor Canepa has been working with us and uh just wrote a letter. We collaborated with him um over the last week on a letter to the Attorney General um regarding Sutter's um uh looking, urging the Attorney General to look into Sutter's use of federal care funds, um CARES Act funds, and uh they received eight hundred and fifty-three million dollars for the purposes of um, you know, uh saving programs that were imperiled during Covid. And um instead, and anyway, so there's a lot going on and Supervisor Canepa is is on board. So if you could put this on your next agenda, we'd really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have uh our first call in user. You can press star six to unmute.
Hello, hello. So we sent a couple of emails through about the time. Um I know that on July, at the July hearing, there was one caller that received four minutes. So we really expected same. We never received a confirmation on that. So I don't know why nobody's confirming this or I mean, if, again, we're going back to the same ways of just not responding. So um I'll just start it off. So I'm very, very concerned about no communication with you guys. Really concerned that um issues like medical center and um, you know, the police. I know, Tom, we sent you a whole list of items to be covered and we've yet to hear back. And uh other cities actually have a number of uh a number of public comments where it's three minutes. So we really expected the same. Also, huge disappointments in the oats. I understand that the community has not been reached out to. And I know that there's a lot of emails being exchanged and shared that we send over to others. And we don't want people writing on our coattails. So we don't want anyone saying, okay, here's what I want and needs are. You know, someone to duplicate that effort. I know election year is coming up and there's a number of candidates on uh vying for city council seats. But really want to work as a team and as an org chart states, we're actually at the top of the org chart. So um org chart are for teams. They're not for individual individuals with hat that have their own little thing going to be on council. But um to be a member of the city council, all one has to be is eighteen years of age and a registered voter. It's not a very difficult task. So um wanted to work on cooperation as well as wanted to give, I don't know if Sacred Heart Cathedral is still on there, but we did want to give them a big shout out. We're very, very familiar with them. Some of us being um alum from the early years where Brother Philip, Brother Martin, uh John Scudder and so forth. Um so yeah, I have to do another interpretation on the next call because I his first, he's actually English is his third language, Spanish being the first, French being the second, and um English being the third. So you will be hearing from me on the next call, just to give an interpretation. But again, I definitely do want to make sure that we try to work as a team to get things done and um understand the community needs and not simply just building housing and condos and apartments and all that good stuff. Okay, bye.
Thank you for your comments. Then last, we have uh another call in user.
Okay, so I'm here to speak. My last uh speech was with regards to the public. I'm here to speak for Norm. We go by Norm P. He's asleep right now. But um so we wanted to cover also the mental wellness and the mental stability and the funding for this. We do understand that the um police budgets have been increased and um not enough for mental wellness and not enough for mental facilities to house the individuals. I mean, we've seen in even as close as San Carlos that a sword, some may blame the sword. We actually blamed a mentally ill individual for doing harm with that sword, as well as a car in L.A. So we really want to focus on the mental illness and uh facilities to help these individuals because we believe those are actually the source of the major crimes that occur in Evol, Texas, obviously, was a um tragedy. And uh some of us actually had the visit there, but it was a very heart wrenching experience. But um definitely do want to make sure that you guys really get the message about mental wellness and mental illness and how it can really impact individuals. And we did under- understand about the suicide rates, but um for the veterans as well as the community are very large. But um as well as training, the training for the police, and this is very very important. So law enforcement is trained to believe that everyone's a suspect. So that's really opposite of what the pu- private sector believes in. I mean, the first thing that officer sees is your hands, whereas the first thing um the pu- private sector sees is a hand to shake. So um the officers are looking for a gun and we're looking for a hand to shake. So um just, you know, we're we're sort of in different worlds, so sort of want to try to bridge the gap. And I think de-escalation on the training, I don't know where the police department came up with the training manuals on this, but um everyone's not out to harm you. I mean, uh personally, if one wanted to be a police officer in the past, they were there to help the police, not to harm the police. So training, training, training. Uh and that's about it. So no, definitely do want to thank you for your time. It's been a long night. Sleep well, but uh really runs to try to work as a team. Take care. Bye.
Thank you for your comments. That concludes public comment.
Thank you, Leilani. Um next on our agenda is um appointments, any board commission um appointments. All right, seeing none. Let's move on to a report. So council committee meetings from July twenty-fifth to September twelfth, two thousand twenty-two. I know there's a handful here. Um. So I know that um let's see, July twenty-six, we had a dev- a development council subcommittee to look at um a new self-storage facility on Sixty Station Avenue. Um I was attended by myself and Councilmember Manalo. And um it's a new storage unit that will take over um a new spot that's a uh existing spot in that neighborhood and oops, where do I find notes? And the applicant is uh Daniel Sax and he um was talking about approval to demolish an existing meat distribution center and construct a ninety-two thousand six hundred forty square foot, five-story self-storage facility. Um so the first story would include a twelve space parking garage, a one thousand seventy square foot and self-storage area. The upper four stories would consist of entirely um self-storage area. And long story um short, uh I think um there there's a unique architecture um style to it. So um it's kind of like built from very wide to almost kind of like a narrower part up to to the upper um the upper levels of the storage units. So it doesn't look like it's very high because it kind of ascends into the sky. Um and I think that it will provide um some activation to that area and also coming from the freeway, if you're coming from two eighty south going into Daly City into San Francisco, it kind of leads um pretty nicely in terms of the style and moving into the direction of the two eighty north, seeing our Car- Carvana site and everything. So um Councilmember Manalo, if you want, if you would like to add, feel free to add as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think you covered most of it. I think I agree with you as far as the design aesthetics. Um it's a more modernized kind of storage structure um that could be seen on the freeway. Um and that um definitely that that there was um different setbacks in regards to kind of the architectural design. So um yeah, thank you for the reminder. I was like, we did have a subcommittee during that time. But um yeah, I mean, it, there was really, um I mean, it's right there. Um and the use of it is, I thought that um it was, it was a use um in that area right by the freeway. And so it didn't have no issues around that, right? So.
Right. Okay, um any other council committee reports? All right, I guess we'll go ahead and move uh to the city council reports. Any city council reports? Okay, I have a real quick one. Um or if I find uh, okay, so for uh Peninsula Clean Energy, we met um back on. back on what was that? July twenty-eight, two thousand and twenty-two, and a lot of the bulk of the meeting was the implementation of the diversity, equity, access, accessibility and inclusion, which I'm a part of as, as part of the subcommittee. We're getting, we're getting there in terms of full implementation of the program. And so basically, there are one, two, three, four, five, six pillars that they are exploring to create a foundation for this DAI, DEA I practice and policy. So they're looking at power resources. How do we provide secure, sufficient, low-cost, clean sources? Public policy. So we could strongly advocate for public policies that support Peninsula Clean Energy organization priorities, community organ, community energy programs to implement robust energy to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and align energy supply and demand. Market and research, market, marketing outreach and customer care. So developing a strong brand reputation that drives PCE's programs while ensuring customer satisfaction, financial stewardship to to solidify employee sound fiscal strategies to promote long-term organizational sustainability and then organizational excellence, excellence. So that they're adhering to sustainable business practices and fostering workplace culture, innovation, diversity, transparency and integrity. So right now we're like in the project tasks and there is two, three, we're like out of the, there's five steps. So from February to May, we're looking at organizational needs assessment. And then we led to the second step was looking at DAI legislation, regulatory analysis. And then we're at the policy development from August, September, which we hope to have existing organizational policies, documents updated in this month and next month. And hopefully we'll have a plan of action that will be solidified soon. So that's where we're at right now. They've already completed the DEA I policies and employee handbook, strategic plan, vendor policy. I think this might be key to, you know, maybe the future for Daly City if we decide to do a DEA I and I know there's the question, the you know, we're talking about finding vendors for our for Daly City and we always talk about if we could find a vendor of color to talk about equity. We're looking at that. They also, we also completed review for inclusive and sustainable workforce policies. And so the next steps is recommend DEA enhancements and update other policies. And so we're getting close. And I think by the end of this, the next couple of months, we should have a full-on DEA I policy, the first of its kind for any type of energy organization like PCE in the state. So we're setting precedents throughout the state. And this won't be possible for my colleagues and our consultant G cap. So that's about it for PCE. Are there any other council committee reports?
I defer until next time.
Thank you, Pam. Councilmember Justin Manal.
Maybe.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First and foremost, thank you so much for doing such important work in such an integral agency with Peninsula Clean Energy and to see that you're at the forefront with others to really implement tangible diversity and inclusion and equity principles as well as like implementation of, it sounds like it's very intricate in all areas. I'm so grateful that you're on there because maybe in that same vein, you can utilize some of what you've learned. Yeah, within our organization here. And it looks like your, your, your brain is very spinning already on how ways they could transfer over. So thank you so much for that. I wanted to report back. I'll probably give a more extensive report at our next council meeting, but the one that is top of mind is going to the Cal Cities League of Cities Convention that just happened the past week. You know, as always, they have a robust, I would say robust like sessions. And then we were able to do AB, is it AB one, two, three? Wait, wait, eight, twelve. The, the ethics one, right? And yeah, which was, which they provide on an annual basis for council members and also other officials, city officials. But it was, yeah, great to see other folks that came from San Mateo County and actually all up and down California. And yeah, I, I think that, you know, from those sessions, we got to learn a lot and also be able to build networks across the state to hear what's happening in other municipalities and jurisdictions. I am really happy to share with everyone that, thank you, Mayor Dos Magual for being there at my swearing in. I got elected to be the president of the Cal Cities API Caucus. And so this year I'll be leading that and really excited to do so. And I, I will defer all of my reports from August at our next meeting because now I know it's twelve fifteen. Oh, but before we, one last thing, Mr. Mayor, if it's possible, you know, I am, and then this is for the record. I, I am a proponent to have a resolution for the Milkelson Therapy Pool. I think that you know, it's such a crucial really necessity for those who need it the most. I mean, and yeah, so I, I would request that we put that on, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much. That's my last, last comment now. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Manalo. And yeah, so congratulations once again on being the chair for API Caucus. That's a huge deal for yourself, but also representing our city, especially in our city being such a large and dense API community. We provide so much robust experience and we're leading the way in terms of the state. So thank you. So at this time, we'll go ahead and lead to a German in memory. I have, oh, my bad. I forgot to talk about staff, staff reports. Oh, hand it over to city manager.
Yes, sir. I have no reports in the efforts of time.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity.
So much time. Okay, not a problem. Just wanted to put it out there. Okay. So our next agenda item is adjourned in memory and I would like to hand it off to Councilmember Di Giovanni for this first memory.
Thank you, Mayor. The, the family had to drop off the meeting, so I'll defer to the next meeting.
Got it. Thank you.
No, yeah, no worries.
Okay. I also want to close in memory of Gary Fox, who's the DCPD Lieutenant Matthew Fox's father. Another one is Nancy McCarthy, who is the Department of Water, Wastewater Collection System Manager, Kevin McCarthy's mother. And there was a attached obituary that I'd like to read. So Nancy Ann McCarthy. Nancy McCarthy passed away just the way she prayed peacefully in her own home on July fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two at the young age of ninety-seven. She was born March thirty-first, nineteen twenty-five in San Francisco, California to Rosario Ochipinti and Mary Shalaba. She lived in Bernal Heights with her parents and eight siblings. She graduated from Balboa High School. In September nineteen forty-eight, she married James McCarthy and together they raised five children. Her greatest love was her family and her Italian heritage. Preceded in death by the lover Jane, over life James McCarthy, her parents and her siblings, Jenny Ochipinti, Constance Potas, Rose Ayelo, Josephine Embellino, Jacob Ochipinti, Ja, John Ochipinti and Sam Ochipinti. She is survived by her children, Barry, Michael, Dennis, Kevin and Lori Lopez. Her children, Ryan, Amanda, Daniel, Sean, Jeff, Brian, Tim, Chris McCarthy and Ryan and Melana Lopez. She also has five great grandchildren and one on the way. In addition, she is survived by her precious sister, Jeanne Carr, and many nieces and nephews. We thank everyone for their thoughts and prayers for the care she received from New Haven Healthcare and Hospice. And then I also want to close in memory of Natividad R. Yuching Tat, who is DCPD Police Assistant Reyna Wong's grandmother. So in memory of those that I just mentioned, I want to offer a moment of silence.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would like
Oh, yes. Go ahead, go right ahead, Councilmember Glenn Sylvester.
Thank you. I wanted to concur my sincere condolences also for Gary Fox. If anyone knows about police work and it doesn't matter what shift you work, but if you think about it, you spend more times with your partner than you do with your spouse. If you worked a swing watch, which I worked a swing watch with Gary Fox, he wasn't my partner, but he was another radio car to which we would respond and meet up with each other at different calls and spending time with your partner in a radio car, you talk, you constantly talk all the time. And by the time you get off, you go home and go right to sleep and or maybe based upon this shift, your spouse or significant other is either gone off to work or asleep. So it's like a second family. So in regards to Gary Fox, I just want to make it known that as far as I know, he had, he has two sons. One of them is with Daly City Police Department and the other is with San Francisco Police Department. So clearly he was a great dad, a father and a mentor to the rest of his family. And if you ever had the chance to look at his Facebook post, he was very proud of his daughter. And what I mean by proud is there's a term called wrenching. And if you're in the automotive industry, you understand what wrenching means. Basically, you get underneath there, get your hands dirty and wrench and take off nuts and bolts. Well, he was an avid collector of earlier model cars and he was very proud to teach his daughter how to work on those cars. And the joy that you get when someone, especially your child, is doing something with you. So I'll never forget Gary. I was green when I came in and every time he would look at me, especially if I did something wrong, he'd have to shake his head and he pulled me aside and said, come here. Let me show you the right way to do this. So again, my sincere condolences for the loss of a great friend, partner and colleague. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Glenn Sylvester. Councilmember Justin Manal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It is with great sadness that I'd like to add this to adjourn in memoriam for Ms. Jennifer Lealow. Ms. Jennifer Lealow was my classmate at Jefferson High School. The Jefferson High School class of nineteen ninety-eight. Officers and fellow classmates mourn the passing of one of our dear friends, Ms. Jennifer Lealow. Jen will always be remembered as a kind, loving and happy classmate, one who lit up a space with her contagious smile. Her kindness was just one of the many qualities that she shared with us. Not to mention the famous banana bread she graced many classmates with. Her sweet personality and qualities made her a cherished friend to many. We love seeing her grow into an adult and watching the love she had for her family. Truly an example to follow of what a daughter, sister and the best auntie should be. We will miss you, Jen, and we pray for your soul to rest in love and peace. Prayers and love to the Lealow family. And there's one poem I just want to share with everyone that really embodies Jennifer Jen Lealow. Kindness, kindness is one of the most forgotten, yet most wonderful gifts you could give. It heals wounds and brightens days. It brings us together and reminds us that we are more similar than we are different. Sometimes it's easier to be cold and distant and harder to be warm and vulnerable. Choose kindness anyways. Be an encourager, be someone who helps others, give love, have compassion, stay humble. It is the little acts of kindness that make the biggest difference.
Thank you, Councilmember Manalo. And with that, just want to remind my fellow colleagues that we still have a housing housing development finance agency meeting, but I'd like to offer a moment of silence for those that we shared today. Thank you, everybody. This meeting is adjourned, but I also like to welcome everybody back for our regular meeting for Housing Development Finance Agency Agenda. I mean, it's now September thirteenth. So we'll make this quick. So pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five three, members of Daly City Council and staff will participate in this meeting via teleconference. Members of the public are encouraged to watch this meeting via live stream on the city's YouTube channel, on the city's website or on local channel twenty-seven. So I like to and call order. Please do roll call, please.
Mr. Buenaventura.
I'm still here.
Miss Di Giovanni.
Present.
Ms. Manalo.
Present.
Mrs. Sylvester.
Ms. Sylvester, present.
Dr. Rod.
I'm here as well. All right. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from July twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-two?
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll go ahead and second it. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Okay, public appearances, oral communications, I'll hand it off to Leilani.
For those members of the public who wish to provide general public comment, please click the raise hand feature to speak. For those joining by phone, join in to raise your hand. No hands raised, Mayor.
Thank you, Leilani. This meeting adjourned. Everybody rest well and we'll see you in a couple of weeks, hopefully in person. Okay. Bye, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.